At 6:00 PM at the Hubbardston Select Board and Finance Joint Committee meeting. Reminder to everyone that's here, the meetings are digitally recorded, so we have to be respectful of each other as you are speaking or when you are listening to each other. With that, I'll turn it over to Seth, you can call your own.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just do want to note that you can call the meeting to order, however, without another member of the Finance Committee walking in, no votes of the Finance Committee can be actionable.
Okay. I think that...
Well, you can call it to order. Yeah. Of course. The Finance Committee meeting.
They were speakers last year. I've always wanted to speak to yours. So, I mean...
Okay. So, with that, we will turn it over to the presentation. Do you want to introduce?
I will let Seth since he...
Okay. All right. Thank you all for coming today. We have the Tracy Loback is the Field Director for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees here this evening. I had the opportunity to see the presentation based on the Massachusetts School Budget because I'm the Fire Chief of the neighboring community. It was very insightful and it was eye-opening to see how the whole puzzle is put together, how the funding works for individual communities in a larger school district. I felt that was very important this year that Quabbin's going to be the first, this is the first year of Hold Harmless, and I thought it was a good idea to have this presentation so everyone can get a full understanding of how it works. So, I appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Yeah. I received the invitation. So, Seth already knows this, but I am actually a local kid. I grew up in Sterling. I live in Worcester now. And actually, I worked one summer. I know some of you are long-term residents enough to remember Calico and Cream was one of my summer gigs, so I have got some claims to fit. Yes, exactly. Got some claims to digs here in Hubbardston. So, it was great to be able to get the invitation to come speak to you about Quabbin's budget, just honestly from a personal perspective of like these are the schools I grew up with. So, what this presentation does is it gives you a little, first of all, a little bit of historic perspective as to why it is that we do this the way that we do, because the main thing everybody knows is that it's a complicated calculation, and sometimes people wonder about that. And then it walks through step by step why the calculation itself. And here, this is using the 26 numbers for both the state and then specifically for Quabbin and for Hubbardston. So, one of the things that is important to understand when we're talking about Massachusetts public education is that we've actually been doing it a really long time. You know, we've probably seen Plymouth Rock. It has 1620 right there on the rock. And pretty much, we no sooner had English settlement in the colony than we started having public education. And the first public education law was actually passed in 1647 by the Mass Bay Colony. You didn't think you were going to get a history lesson. The reason that this matters, first of all, you probably click, the reason that this matters is that, first of all, it does something a little bit revolutionary, which is that it, rather than having parents or those who had apprentices actually pay for the education of the children, which is what had been the format, and honestly, still is the format in many parts of the world. Instead, what the Mass Bay Colony said was that the towns would be responsible for the public education of any children that were within the boundary. And as soon as there was a town that had 50 households, they had to have an elementary school. And as soon as there was a town that had 100 households, they had to have what they called the grammar school, which would be like a high school. And as it turns out, this isn't on the slide, but as it turns out, you can click, as it turns out, the thing that is really interesting about this is they didn't just pass the law and kind of let it be. They actually enforced the law. And the reason that I know this is if you go back through the minutes of some towns, including my own hometown of Worcester, you can find places where they didn't actually obey the law, and the Mass Bay Colony would fine them. And then they would get together in town meeting, and there'd be all this grumbling where they'd have to put like past money to pay the fine, and then they'd grumble because they had to have a, you know, hire a teacher. So, they meant it when they said it. So, part of what this is about is actually that we've been doing public education in Massachusetts a long time, and we've been doing it based on this sort of very town-based system. So, if you go to the next slide. Now, what this ends up meaning is that we kind of set everything up in this fashion from very early days, and I would argue, and the longer that I'm doing this job, the more that this seems to be the case, we kind of never really got away from that. So, if you look at other states across the country, the way that they fund public education is, well, actually, a lot of different ways. There's a lot of them that do a county-based system. If you go out to places like California, they've had conversations about, well, if we have a state funding system, really, the state needs to be the one who's actually kind of funding it. Yep?
Quick question, because I know how many times you've given this presentation. Why is it called the Old Deluder Satan Law?
Because, have any, did any of you have grandparents who said that idle hands of the devil's workshop?
I say that.
Okay. It's literally how the law starts. The old deluder Satan seeking who he may devour is essentially like the first line. It's something like that. It's named after the beginning of the law.
It's the Puritan uniform.
Exactly. That like, think about who's, think about who's in Massachusetts in 1647. That's who's passing the law. So, they're not doing this because they want to have all the kids read and da-da-da-da. No, this is because the kids are going to get themselves into trouble, so we need to keep them busy, so we're going to have schools to keep them busy. Excellent question. Now, once we've done that, though, then we kind of never reconsider that format. And so, I was reading, Matthew Gardner Kelly wrote a book, Dividing the Public, which is about California school finance, but he quotes this piece from Fletcher Swift, who wrote the 1920s, about Massachusetts school funding. And he has this quote that I really think says a lot, which is, "No other state pursued so long and so completely the policy of pacing almost the entire burden of school support along, among the local communities." And he's writing from a national perspective. And so, I think that's helpful for Massachusetts because we sort of, you know, we know what our local thing looks like, and maybe we have an idea what the state thing looks like. But from a national perspective, we kind of do this in our own way, and we're not necessarily doing it like everyone else. And I think that's a healthy thing to keep in mind. So, we go to the next slide. Now, the next thing that happens from kind of a big picture, how do we fund schools perspective, is the state constitution, which came together in 1780. When it was put together, Massachusetts actually put public education straight into the state constitution. And the reason they did it is because as they're sort of constructing the system of government, we're going to have an executive branch, we're going to have a legislative branch, we're going to have a judicial branch. Part of what, I mean, this is actually Chapter 5, part of what they considered was the fact that, okay, this is great, and like, we're going to, by the way, 1780, remember, they haven't actually yet thrown out the British, just keep that in mind, they're writing the Constitution anticipating that happening. But if they do that, they need to have a government. And that's great and all, but eventually, they're not going to be the ones running it anymore, and what are you going to do then? And that is exactly what they're doing. So, I quote the whole section here, which is to say that the reason we have public schools is actually to make sure that we continue to have a democracy in Massachusetts. But if you click, the part that matters from a funding perspective is whose job it is. And it's the state's job. It's the state job of the state legislature, it's the job of magistrates, magistrates is the executive branch. So, that's the idea. Now, the thing is that this passes in 1780. It doesn't really actually change how we fund schools. Funding schools is still kind of happening on the 1647 old deluder Satan pattern, more or less. Now, if you click again, what ends up happening, I mean, you all were actually leading into this in the conversation you were having before the meeting, that there's really two things that happen, really, within a lifetime, probably, of many of the people at this table, which is that Massachusetts passes the first special education law in the country in 1972. We refer to it as Chapter 766, which recognizes that all students have a right to a public education, and school districts have the responsibility of educating all children. That's followed the following year by the federal IDEA law, which passes in, which is 50 years old this year. The other thing that happens within 10 years is something that comes up a lot this time of year, which is Proposition 2 and 1/2. Okay? Many of you may remember that passing. I remember it myself. And because the needs of the students that now are having to be met are more expensive, that runs headlong into the fact that local communities can only draw so much revenue without going for Uber rides and for other kinds of things, without other kinds of action. And so, there are a series of lawsuits that are filed against the state, starting in the late 1980s into the early 90s. And they come together in a case performed before the Supreme Judicial Court, known, in a case known as McDuffie. McDuffie was a school child in Brockton. Her dad was on the school. And the SJC found for the plaintiffs and said that, yeah, that was great language that they put in the state constitution, but it wasn't just great language. It actually obligated the state to do something about making sure that this public education system existed across the state regardless of local communities' ability to pay. So, that happens in June of 1993. Within a week, if you click again, the state passes what we think of as the 1993 Education Reform Law. Now, you may have heard that reference when people talk about things like the MCAS. It changed teacher licensure, it changed the powers of school committees, gave us state standards for curriculum. But the main thing it did was that it was an aid funding law. And the reason that they had, they created it is because the state lost the case. And that's one of the things that I met pains to stress with school committees, is that, yeah, we think about all these other things that happened, but it's because local school children, their parents on behalf of the local school children sued the state to say, you're not actually doing your part for public education, that we actually had this happen and had the reform law pass. So, Master of Law, Chapter 70, is part of that. Chapter 70 is the shorthand we use for just state aid for public education. Master of Law, Chapter 70, sets out what they say is a fair and adequate minimum per pupil, and then also a standard local funding effort. So, there's two halves of the equation that happened. Is it easier if I click?
Yep.
See? It's busy, like you said.
That way.
It's only going to get worse. There's a whole bunch of other things that are in Chapter 70 that will not be quoted. Most of them have to do with school funding, but the first section is really the section that lays out what we're doing for public education in terms of funding. So, as I said, there's two halves of the equation that get laid out in Chapter 70 in the state law. The first is, how much does it educate, how much does it cost to educate a child in Massachusetts? And then the second section deals with, okay, so now that we've figured that out, who's going to pay for it? Right? So, standard foundation budget for, on a per pupil basis, standard local funding effort. And again, remember, it has to apply to everybody. So, they have to do some sort of a calculation that works regardless of whether you're in Boston, or you're, you know, here in Hubbardston, or you're in Worcester, or you're in, you know, the metro west suburbs, it still has to work regardless. So, something to keep in mind is that we are in the middle of the second major, the second big change in terms of how this works. There have been a couple of smaller ones along the way. So, the Student Opportunity Act was signed into law in 2018 by Governor Baker, and it was a revision. It's a revision of only the first half of the calculation, is the thing to keep in mind. So, it's a revision only of the, how much does it cost to educate a child in Massachusetts? It's the result of a lot of work that was done by the superintendents, the school committees, the teachers' unions, parents, town officials, for years and years and years, which got the study together, which happened in 2015, and then it took us four years to get the law passed, which actually put into effect the changes. So, the Student Opportunity Act, I mean, it does a number of things, but when it comes to the foundation budget, the main thing that it does is, over six years, it phases in four major changes. The first is that it separates out the inflation rate for health insurance, and we'll talk more about that when we get to the inflation rate. It gives an increase in the in-district special education percentage, which is an assumption based on enrollment. Again, we'll talk more about that when we get there. There's an increase in the dollar amount per pupil for English language learners, and there's an increase in the dollar amount for low-income students. And in both of those cases, what's happening in terms of this phase-in, so the phase-in for the percentages is, as you'd expect, it goes closer and closer to a goal that it's going to get to at the end of the six years. For the dollar amounts going up, they set a goal rate in the law, and then there, it also at the same time is going up by inflation. So, when we get to the six years, it will be over that. But that was the two things that are happening. The thing to remember is that the big money in this, and I'll say this again when we get to that slide, is the low income, because, and this, I think, also reflects on some of the conversation you were having before the meeting, part of what the big part of the study was that was done, that came out in 2015, was showing that the needs of students who are low income, and then the ability of districts who have high concentrations of low-income students, was just much more significant than anybody was actually sort of recognizing. So, that's really the main change, that's one of the big changes that's happening. Now, as you note, by the way, originally, it was supposed to be a seven-year implementation. It was signed into law in November of 2019. Governor Baker's House One budget, the following January, would have implemented over seven years, but you might remember, we had a little bit of a glitch in March of 2020, and then we actually didn't have a budget until October of 2020. So, we're on a six-year implementation cycle. The legislature did commit to staying to the final, the same end date, and doing it over six years rather than seven. So, in order to answer this first question, this, how much does it cost to educate a child in Massachusetts? What they did was they attached dollar amounts to the various things you need in order to educate a child in Massachusetts, or really anywhere. So, you're going to need, some children are going to need special education. You need to make sure that you provide benefits for your employees. You need to be able to keep the buildings heated, the lights on. There are support services that students need. Students need supplies. Teachers need professional development. You need to have teachers. You need to have specialist teachers. You need to have administrators, you need to have principals. So, if you think of it as there being a dollar amount attached to each of those boxes on a per-child basis, and that's on a grade-level basis, right? So, it costs a certain amount for a kindergartner by teacher and so forth, those dollar amounts are a base foundation amount. And so, for FY '26, for the budget for next year, these are the base foundation amounts in the foundation budget. Now, remember, we're not yet paying for anything, okay? We're just coming up with a number of how much it should, a fair and adequate minimum per pupil should be. You'll note that there continues to be a kindergarten half-day measurement, because there are still some places in Massachusetts that have that. Vocational is the highest because they have smaller class sizes, and they have much more significant needs in terms of equipment. So, that gets set each year generally in House One or House Two when the governor files the budget. It tends not to change over the course of the budget deliberation, state budget deliberation. So, to that base foundation amount, now, the thing to remember is that every year, every school district has to file what I refer to as an October One report. So, there's a deadline by which they have to say, you know, here's how many students we have. So, the enrollment number is based, that per-pupil number is based, hi there, welcome, on the actual student enrollment as of October One of the previous year. So, if we're looking at Quabbin's numbers that they're going to use for the budget for next year, it's actually based on the number of kids they had in seats on October One of the previous year. There's always essentially this one-year lag, okay? Now, these two numbers are also based on actual student enrollment. There's a per-pupil increment for low income, and there's a per-pupil increment for English learners. So, for FY '26, these are the three increments for English learners. Now, again, this is done based on the students who are considered English learners. This one actually changes a bit over the year. It actually gets updated by DESI. These are, as we said, heading towards a goal rate that was set as part of the Student Opportunity Act. Part of what has changed in particular on this is that grade nine through 12 is now the highest amount. You only have those students for that short remaining period of time. It's that much more important that you get the intensive, their intensive needs met in terms of getting them to English proficiency. And then the other thing, and as I said, the big change from the Student Opportunity Act is the low-income per-pupil increment. Again, this is a student-by-student dollar amount. This is done by 12 groups, which is the percentage of students who are considered low-income in your school district. For Quabbin, that's Group 7 for this year. So, Group 7, in case you can't read it, is 36 to 41.99% of students are considered low-income. Now, one of the questions, of course, is, how do we know, right? What counts as low income? And there have been some changes over the past couple of years in terms of this, partly as a result of students, changes that were made to the National School Lunch Program, because what we used to do is just collect the free and reduced lunch forms. Many of you remember, may remember those, and that's how we counted things. But one of the things, changes that took place a couple of years ago was that, about 10 years ago now, was that the National School Lunch Program started to do something called Community Eligibility, which allowed school districts that had a particularly high rate of students who were low-income, if they could do enough matching to get probably reimbursement enough to actually feed all of their kids on the federal USDA program, rather than just the ones that counted as free lunch. They do that through a program called Community Eligibility, and it means that the students are enrolled in these state programs. Now, as school districts started to switch to that program, it meant that there were fewer and fewer districts that were actually collecting the forms, and eventually, the state said, look, we can't run two different systems. Like, this is getting too confusing. It switched all of us to Community Eligibility. So, what the state does now is it actually takes the enrollment in these state programs, it matches it to the enrollment that's in the school district, and anytime there's a match, that student counts as low income. There also are a couple of additional things that count, students that are homeless, students that are in foster care. And then there is also, and this came through with the Student Opportunity Act, a supplemental program that the school district can use to basically file paperwork to say that the student isn't actually showing up in those systems, maybe they're not enrolled in those programs, but they actually are still low-income and they need to be counted as that. And so, the direct certification process has been, I would say, increasing in accuracy since we started using it in 2017, and essentially capturing more and more of the students that actually are considered low-income. So, you'll see, in a minute, we'll get to what Quabbin's numbers look like, and part of what's going on, it's sort of, there's two things that are happening at the same time. One is that child poverty has increased in Massachusetts since the pandemic, but there also has been since 2017, a greater cap, sort of greater accuracy in our calculation and in the number of students that are actually being counted who are low-income. So, the one thing that doesn't involve students actually being counted is special education. And so, special education is based on a percentage of the total enrollment of the school district. For out-of-district special education, so you know that every school district, not every school district, every K through 12 school district, tuitions some students out who have particularly high special education needs, the assumed number is a 1% of the enrollment. As a result of the Student Opportunity Act, we are phasing in towards 4% for in-district special education. For FY '26, it's 3.97%. If you have a fully vocational school district, say, for example, like Monty Tech, it will be 5. This year, it's 4.97. So, I tell you that before I tell you the dollar amounts, because, again, not based on students who are on IEPs, not based on students who are considered students with disabilities, it's based on that, just an assumption of the enrollment. Should you be interested, though, what it is considering is that most students who are in-district special education students don't spend most of their time getting special education services. If the statewide average is 18% of students are receiving special education services, if you took that and you sort of smushed them into the full-time equivalency, that would be 4%. So, that's where that came from.
These figures here.
Yes.
That's per student.
Per student, but not actually. So, it's just...
And that's mandated by the state.
That's, that's, we're just doing math at this point. Nobody's spending any money yet.
Okay. All right.
In a minute, I'm going to tell you how much this all under-calculates special education by at the state level, and let me just tell you in advance, it's a big number. And it was a big number 10 years ago. So, in terms of inflation, I didn't used to spend a lot of time on inflation, and then it became kind of the big story. So, inflation is, comes from a United States Department of Commerce measurement of state and local spending. So, state-level spending, local community spending, school district spending across the country. And the state measures that every federal quarter. And what we, what the state then does in terms of coming up with the calculation for the inflation rate is it looks at what that calculation was one fall to the next fall, and the rate of change between the two becomes the inflation rate. And that is easily one of the more complicated things that I explained, so if I just totally lost you. The reason I explain that now, though, is because inflation rate's been a little weird lately. If you notice, in FY '23 and '24, it was the same number, and then it fell pretty dramatically in FY '25, the current fiscal year, and it's really still back below, only below 2% for FY '26. The reason for that is because of what was actually happening with state and local spending over that time, right? So, what happened as we were sort of in the, kind of the height of the pandemic, well, everybody kind of went, whoa, we don't know what's going on with, with what kind of money we're going to have, right? It kind of held up. You can see that happening in FY '22. In FY '23 and FY '24, what happened? The federal pandemic aid had rolled out, right? So, towns and school districts actually had funding. They were trying to make sure that they were actually meeting all of the various needs, which had, of course, exploded in all kinds of different directions. And so, that federal pandemic aid was rolling out. Now, the reason it's 4.5% is because the Student Opportunity Act capped the inflation rate at 4.5. It would have been something closer to 7 or 8% for both of those years. That's what the actual rate of change really was, but the law says it can only be 4.5. Now, what then happened as we started to roll into the end of '24? Well, school districts were done with their USR funding, and towns and cities, for the most part, were through most of their pandemic aid. The rate of increase of spending fell way down, and we had an inflation rate for this year of 1.35%, and for the, for next year of 1.93. Now, there's two notes I would make on this. One is that 4.5% cap. Interestingly, the Education Committee at the state house is actually hearing a bill on this very issue today. And then, as I said, health insurance has its own rate. And the reason for that, I think is not a surprise to anyone who's seen health insurance rates at all, they tend to go up by more than most of the numbers that are on that chart. And as part of the Student Opportunity Act, establishing a separate health insurance rate was part of that. So, for FY '26, it's 6.13. Now, my guess is your health insurance probably is probably going up by more than that. It is most places. It is the three-year average of the state GIC rate. It is based on something having to do with health insurance, and the only other consolation I can offer is that at least it's not 1.93, which it would have been prior to the Student Opportunity Act.
So, I, can I interrupt?
Absolutely.
I have one question about the low-income student.
Yes.
Now, back in 2020, when the floodgates were open, I'm trying to keep this neutral, and all these immigrants came in with their children, did that drive up the low-income cost on children? You know, the amount of low income? Because I, I don't know. I mean, they were staying in hotels, and everyone I saw had 14 kids, or three kids, or whatever, four kids. And who absorbed that? The towns or me, the taxpayer, which we pay for everything anyway?
So...
So...
Yep.
Did it skew the numbers the last four years?
Um, so, low...
For low income?
Low income actually is more sensitive to what, to the number of people who are enrolled in mass health.
Well, they all got put on mass health.
Except they, that's the thing, they did, so, first of all...
They didn't?
No. So, and that's the thing, is that when we, I don't think I put a thing in here.
Oh, really?
I think they put them on Medicare, didn't they?
Right. It depended on what, what, if, among other things, it depends on what your actual legal status is, like, what kind of paperwork you have and under what terms you're here.
Let's go with illegal.
So, if you're undocumented, I mean, honestly, even that would still depend. But from the perspective, to answer the question you're asking...
Undocumented, that's the proper saying, I guess.
Well, if you're, to answer the actual question you're asking about sort of educate, from an education perspective, the reason it matters as to whether or not they end up on mass health, if a student is on mass health, then they count as low income.
Okay.
Now, the trick is that, remember, we said it's, it's, there's a one-year lag. And that's actually where the rubber hit the road on newcomer students. Honestly, it happens every time. Like, we had this happen in Worcester when there was a flood in Puerto Rico, and we had a whole bunch of people come to Worcester. They all came in November, and they don't count towards your students. So, the state usually tries to do supplemental funding. They have done that for students like, students as you're speaking of. It's a per diem rate, and it's released, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, on a quarterly basis. So, there is supplemental funding that has been going to school districts.
Does it cover the whole amount? I mean, if it costs a child in Quabbin, it's 14,000 a year.
It probably doesn't cover the whole amount for anyone anywhere.
No. So who's making up that difference? We are, the town, the towns, right?
The question, so this, to me, gets into the same question we have around school choice. Do you talk about school choice locally, right? Do you school choice students in, does it cost you more or not? It depends on whether or not you, what you need to add for that student. So if you've got a classroom that has, say, seventeen students in it, I would argue that you can add another two or three kids without adding a teacher. The trick becomes, are they students who need, for example, special education services? Are they students who need English learner services? So something you're gonna see, and I don't think you're gonna see it recently, I think it's happened longer ago, and it's been happening really across the state, is that we are having another sort of bump in terms of English learner students, so students whose first language is in English. That's where you might see those trends start to come up. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it's actually happened, I would need to go back and look again at the state numbers. I don't think we've seen it partic, growing at a larger rate in the last, say, five years than we had in, say, the preceding ones. But it's that mass health enrollment that then-
So it all depends what insurance they were on.
It depends on that, it depends on essentially whether or not you, you're enrolled in the state services, because then they, then you count towards your low income. And then, really, it's that state lag. I mean, honestly, it's the state lag anytime, anything happens, right?
And you don't have the number, number between illegals or undocumented. They're mostly in the cities, but we still get, we still end up paying it somewhere.
Was it tracked? Was, was any of this tracked?
So we, we, the state tracks the number of students who are enrolled in public schools, I mean, on an ongoing basis, like, week to week, even, in terms of that. And that gets broken out by, by low-income status. It gets broken out, I mean, once you actually get students tested, it gets broken out by English learner status, gets broken out by some of the other demographic information. Doesn't get broken out by immigration status. Schools are barred from collecting that.
Is there a number in the state of how many students increased in our student rolls in the past four years?
So, um, student-
Just, just student population?
Student population has been flat, K through twelve, for a number of years. It's been hovering just south of a million students statewide.
Really?
So, yeah, it hasn't grown. Nope.
That's odd. Does that include private school?
Um, it, that includes, so private school enrollment's actually been declining over the past number of years. Yep. So we, so the, the state does track both, but it tracks them separately. When I say public school, it may would include what we think of as public districts, but also would include the charter schools. And that has stayed, you know, it's nine, nine nineteen, something like that. It has been for a number of years. Yeah.
And what's, I hate to keep asking questions, but I'm one of those question-
No, I'd rather that you had your answer question answered.
What is the average size in the state for children in a classroom?
Oh, gosh. Um, I would not want to guess, because, first of all, there would be a difference between K through six and secondary.
Yeah.
And it varies wide. I mean, I would want to, I would genuinely want to go look.
When I went to school, there were thirty-two kids in a class.
Yep.
One teacher.
Mm-hmm.
What is it now? On an average? I, I'm like, just looking for an average, I don't-
I would have, I mean, I genuinely, I would have to, I could look, I'd have to pull it up from the state's website.
But what is that, Quabbin?
Our elementary schools are about twenty-three to twenty-five, so I guess I'll say twenty-four.
Yeah.
And our secondary are like twenty-eight.
Purchase really hasn't changed much over the years.
It's high.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Yeah, it is high compared to most places. I mean, I, obviously, I'm like, I'm a Western perspective.
Well, New Braintree only has thirty-five kids, right?
New Braintree only has thirty-five students overall? No, they have more than that.
Oh, I'm sorry, somewhere over, only at thirty-five.
It's forty's. I'm not sure of their number, but it is more than thirty-five. I think it's like forty-seven, forty-seven.
Forty-seven, maybe.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, well-
But they don't have their own kids in their own schools anymore.
Yeah.
They all go to OCAM. They're shared.
So there's no New Braintree school?
There is, but there's just a preschool in it and a post-grad program. Not, not a school for New Braintree-only students anymore. All the New Braintree kindergarten through grade five go to OCAM with the OCAM students, and sixth through twelve go to Quabbin.
So they still pay for the school?
The town, yep.
That's not open.
It is open. We have a, we have some programs in it, yes.
Yeah. Are the college ones paid for? Is somebody paying rent there?
The postgrad.
Oh, it's a postgrad. It's our own students, eighteen to twenty-two years old.
So the school district is responsible for educating students who are special ed up through age twenty-two?
Is that what it's for? There's special ed?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So it's a special ed program over there?
One special education program, one preschool program over there, yep.
So you've actually led somewhat into this already, which is that from one year to the next, the changes that you'll see in the foundation budget are enrollment changes. So you've already sort of fleshed this out, right? Which is not just the total number of kids, but the number of kids who are low income, the number of kids who are English learners, number of kids who are in kindergarten versus elementary school and so forth. And then that inflation change. And really, the inflation change becomes the crux of, that's what's supposed to be carrying, you're increasing costs from one year to the next. So think back to, you know, the numbers you just saw, and anything you know about any budget, right? Public budget, public side, public school side or otherwise, probably are not increasing, for example, for next year by one point nine three percent. So, that's the foundation budget. Now, the other thing, of course, that's happening is you are seeing these internal shifts as a result of the Student Opportunity Act, right? The low-income rate's growing, the English learner rate's growing. We saw the percentage change in terms of special education, and then we tied the health insurance to something different. That one will be permanent in terms of things. So I sort of stripped out the, the other stuff, I could give you the giant spreadsheet, but, and gave you the Quabbin Regional for FY twenty-six. Now, again, we are not figuring out how, who's paying for anything yet. We're just coming up with a fair and adequate minimum based on the standard rate. And that's got the enrollment, keep in mind, for preschool, it's actually fifty percent of the preschool enrollment, they only count half. Full-day K, elementary, middle, high, and then everything in italics, just remember, those are all increments above the base, so don't try to add those again in the enrollment. Those students are already counted. Total enrollment, again, as of October one, and then a total foundation budget of twenty-seven billion, or twenty-seven, about twenty-eight billion. And again, those totals are standard for, or the per pupils are standard based on the state calculations. So keep in mind that there are very, very few districts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that actually fund a foundation, because, I mean, I think part of what I would say is that the state essentially has conceded that it isn't an adequate amount, because that's why we have the Student Opportunity Act, and we're only in the fifth year of the implementation. The statewide standard, so the last reporting year for the, for actual school spending was at fiscal year twenty-four, of course, because we're still spending twenty-five, and it was twenty-eight percent statewide. So as we said, enrollment is one of the big factors. And so as your enrollment changes over time, that's gonna necessarily lead to a change in your foundation budget. Again, this is the, whoops, this is the school and district profile number, so this isn't necessarily your October one reporting. This actually shifts over the course of the year. But it does, does, does give you some idea of what the Quabbin enrollment has looked like since nineteen ninety-four, which is as far back as the state posts, which is that you did have this sort of descending slope through the two thousand ten and moving forward, but you've actually been fairly stable for a couple of years at this point. And that's, again, total enrollment. Now, of course, the other thing that matters is the selected populations, both in terms of your foundation budget, and then also in terms of what the school district has to do. And so that, this is what the state does. So as I said, you can see, you essentially didn't have a measured English learner population for a significant number of years. Did have an increase through the two thousand eleven, two thousand thirteen, went back down, and it's been sort of essentially hovering at less than one percent of your student population kind of ever since. Now, the thing to remember, of course, is that while that doesn't do a lot for your foundation budget, it still means the district has to serve those students. So you still need to make sure that you have what services are necessary for students who are learning English.
So there definitely was a bump in twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three for English learners?
Well, twenty, so twenty-
The red line I'm looking at.
So two thousand twelve goes up to one percent is the highest that it's been. And then it goes back down to point, point two.
Right. And then it was pretty level, and you get to twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three.
So that's just point three, which it was for two thousand seventeen. You're up to half a percent for twenty-five.
I'm, I'm looking to the right of that. I'm looking at twenty, twenty-one, there was a jump.
So this is-
Twenty-two, twenty-three, there's a jump.
This is point three, and this is point three. So these are the same, which is the same it's been here, it's the same it was here.
Alright, well, it's higher.
So it goes up to half a percent here.
Yeah.
Now, keep in mind, you're talking about the difference in many cases between seven kids and eight kids, because the student population is small enough that it's not, that translating it into a percentage doesn't actually tell you all that much. And that could be that somebody graduated versus that kind of thing.
Well, it's not much of a percent, so.
Yeah, it's, when it's that, I was gonna say, when it's that small, I mean, honestly, even if you look back, if we went back to here, you can even see it for this year.
Yes.
Oops. Right, so the English learners-
Yeah.
Right, so there's six students who are K five, one in middle school, and three in, right? So I mean, that, when you're looking at that number of students, you're correct. It doesn't really help from a percentage.
That's pretty small for, what's that total population, twenty?
Eighteen, eighteen eighty-two, at least from a foundation budget, is probably different as of today.
So that's quite small.
Yes, it is. Yeah. So as you said, from a percentage perspective, it's probably not necessarily relevant, sorry.
Right.
The, the low income, as we said, that, remember that they did change how they were doing measurements, so don't let the massively dramatic change deceive you. The change was actually in two thousand seventeen. However, you are seeing, this is actually exactly what I was talking about in terms of, actually, I shouldn't put that on yet. You are seeing the two things happen at once that I talked about, which is that there was actual real growth of student poverty from two thousand nineteen forward, but then also at the same time, this, this state is doing a better job of tracking student poverty during those years. So how much is which is honestly a little bit tricky to say. Now, the other thing that I would note, and you actually do see it here. When we were giving testimony, we, I mean, it's still just giving testimony before the Ways and Means Committee last year. One of the things that we noted is because of the pandemic, federal Medicaid enrollment had been frozen, and then states were required to essentially purge their roles, right? Which meant that the number dropped. Now, in some cases, that was legitimately because people had actually, were actually doing better, were no longer eligible, but the state also admitted that they essentially had people that they just couldn't find. And part of the point we made is that if any of those were children, they would be dropping off of the low-income increment without a suspect that not they really were. And we do know that some of that happened, because the low-income rate actually declined statewide last year. Now, it regained somewhat this year, and we do think that has to do more with better matching again, although, again, from a student-to-student perspective, it's sometimes hard to tell.
How, how was that tracked during the pandemic, low-income children?
Same thing, they're enrolled in low income, they're enrolled in mass health, they were enrolled in SNAP, they were enrolled in-
Okay.
Now, during that same time period, not to belabor on this, the low-income numbers must have skyrocketed, because the low-income threshold was considerably different due to that there was no income for a moment.
So it didn't change the, the way the state was tracking it, though.
Okay. Right, because they're tracking off of mass health and-
Yeah. No, and honestly, we were lucky, to what I think is probably the point behind your point, which is we were lucky we weren't collecting free reduced lunch forms anymore, because, of course, we moved to everybody having universal free, and we really would have been up a creek in terms of having any kind of measurement anymore, right?
And that is still the case, correct?
That is still the case, yes. Yep, still using community, the direct certification.
So we've had free lunches since twenty, twenty-one or-
Yes, although, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're done probably as a partly USDA, partly state reimbursement, because you're not, you know, you're not, sorry, you weren't expecting a, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so because of that change that I talked about where the USDA started saying if you have a high enough percentage of low-income students, you could potentially feed all of your students through USDA, that was largely the cities and the very, very, like, there were some rural school districts that pulled it off in western Massachusetts. That, those community, those schools are still fully USDA-funded, universal free. What Massachusetts did when the federal program dropped off after the pandemic, so the federal government stopped feeding everyone, was that the state stepped in and said, okay, so for any students who don't count for free or reduced lunch locally, we will make up the difference between that and feeding all kids for the school districts that need it. So for school districts like Quabbin, they're still getting USDA funding, but they're also getting the supplemental funding from the, from the state government to make sure that they can feed all kids.
So we don't take any money out of the budget for, no, it's the cafeteria, except for workers. We pay the worker-
No, you're paid, you're funded.
They are paid out of that funding as well.
Funded entirely on that.
So where did that money go that we used to pay?
We never did. It was always, you, the kids were paid for their lunch, so it would be offered, so.
Yeah, that's pretty-
And staff?
Then you were doing a good job. You mentioned that you're revolving fund, yeah, good job, that's impressive.
Yeah. Good to know.
So my days, it was seventy cent double kneel, it's a little over.
Well, right now, it's better than that.
Does USDA still providing money, but you said that USDA pulled off, like, the federal government pulled off after the pandemic, so why is Quabbin getting it still?
So they, the USDA is no longer fully, is no longer funding to feed all kids in all school districts.
Got it, it was funding all kids, now it's only under power, under power district.
Right, yes. And then the low kids, low-income students in Quabbin. Yes.
So they're all equal, they all get-
Do you expect it to change in the near future?
Well, right now, we're waiting to hear from the Senate about our state level of funding, so.
Yes, yeah. It's, they're, part of what's happening is that the legislature is underfunding that account in the budget that they pass. So then they're having to sort of make up the difference through these-
Right.
No, it's not, it doesn't come out of the federal money, this is actually all local.
No, but I mean, they're not getting federal money, so we have to make up, they have to make up for it somehow.
That's, there's no federal money that's been lost by the state at this moment, in terms of this-
Oh, we haven't lost any federal money at all?
Not, the state hasn't lost federal money yet.
No, they're still funding the low income, right?
Yeah, we just, and we, and they just, and they just won the lawsuit, which was the SRR stuff, or at least this round. Yeah, so, I mean, part of what's happening is that the state is, so, I mean, for example, last year, I think it was a hundred and sixty million dollars, and it actually cost something more like one ninety, so they're having to do it through a supplemental budget. So that's what, if you wanna, you know, if you wonder what keeps me awake at night, maybe it keeps you awake at night, too. That's like, that's one of the lines where I'm like, okay, we're not actually costing that much, like, meanwhile, the school district are out there, we're actually, like, legally now required to fund all kids, anyway. Right, and then the other one that is in here, which matters, and I think that that's a glitch, I'll go back and look at ninety-nine, because I'm certain that it didn't drop to zero. That has to be a typo. But the special education, so remember, special education from a foundation budget perspective is, is percentage, right? So it doesn't have anything to do with the number of kids you have. What does matter from the number of kids you have, of course, is the services you have to provide. So fairly stable, and you're a little bit above state average, although, honestly, state average is growing a bit. It's, it was, it was eighteen, it's going closer to twenty at this point. So if you think about the fact that there are periods of time during which the enrollment dropped, and there are periods of time in which, you know, low-income percentages don't count, that necessarily means, because enrollment is so much a core function of calculating the foundation budget, that in some cases, the foundation budget is gonna go down from one year to the next, right? that in some cases, the foundation budget is gonna go down from one year to the next, right? And so what I've done here is I've highlighted every place where it's highlighted in red, the number is lower than the year before, okay? And again, that's just straightforwardly because the foundation budget is calculated on a per pupil number, and that's all that that's about. It's not, there's no, no behind the scenes kind of thing. Um, now, that hasn't happened recently, um, in part because honestly, your, uh, low income number is high enough that part of what's been going up is you've been boosted because of the Student Opportunity Act. Okay, so that's the foundation budgets. Now we have to come up with the money that we said we were laying out as a fair and adequate minimum of people.
Tracy, can I ask a question?
Of course.
Will we be hitting the Student Opportunity Act again at a later point in this?
No, do you want to ask more questions about it? Because it's, the founding, the Student Opportunity Act is only foundation budget, it doesn't have anything to do with the municipal calculation, so.
So I was working in the Senate when Senator Chang Diaz and her.
Wow.
And her lovely band of cohorts were able to get this passed that year. And what I've noticed shortly leaving after is that the Student Opportunity Act certainly is providing for, I'm from Gardner, so I'm gonna call it the, the Fitchbergs and the Lemmonsters.
Gateway Cities.
And the Whistler, the, the Gateway Cities. For the good of the, just note, I wrote my master's thesis on how the Gateway Cities program is incorrect and.
[laughing]
And cities should be able to.
Do you think that we should be tossing out Barnstable? Because Barnstable always stuck, sorry, not to get distracted.
Long story short, is there any sort of thought process in creating an even playing field again? Like, yes, the Fitchbergs, the Whistlers, and the cities, the Gateway Cities need the extra money, but I feel like it was done on the back of these rural communities.
Uh, it wasn't, you're about to see that. Yeah, so here's what's fascinating, it was done because the, the low income is the real kind of rocket booster, it's entirely about the level of poverty in the community. So among the districts, the districts that have done particularly well, I was at in Central Berkshire Regional, all rural, right? The biggest town in Central Berkshire Regional is Dalton, have you heard of Dalton, do you find Dalton on the lot? They're actually one of the districts that's actually made out the best percentage wise, because they're so high, so high low income, that's a terrible way of putting it.
Because Superintendent Muha will know this number, but the, the Quabbin School District held a legislative event maybe a month ago, the students spoke, they were, they did wonderfully. But at that presentation, there was a slide that put it into dollars and cents, and a vast majority of this funding were in like seven communities.
Because the vast majority of the kids who are poor are in those same communities. So something that we're not particularly comfortable talking about in Massachusetts is that we are a super, super segregated state when it comes to poverty, when it comes to race, and when it comes to language. And so if you look at the percentage of students that are low income, if you look at the students, percentage of students who are English learners, they are enormously concentrated in those same ten communities. So the dollars did exactly, like, there was a headline on that foundation budget, or on that Student Opportunity Act slide, that said essentially, is it doing what we said it would do? And the answer is yes, because the, the need that it laid out, which, I mean, which honestly was the need that was laid out by the foundation budget in nineteen ninety-three, was we fund the kids who are high poverty, we fund the kids who are English learners at a greater rate, because it costs more to educate them. And that's where they are. Like, the, the demog, the, the demographic swaps in terms of school districts in Massachusetts are enormous. And like, we don't, that's one thing that we just like never talk about. We talk about there's like three hundred new school districts, and how many kids, and, but we don't say, but where are they? Um, and that's really where the breakdown is. Because I've seen that slide too, and I, and like the thing, the next slide should be, and here's where the poor kids are. And here's where the kids who are learning English are. Because it's, it's massively, massively concentrated. Yeah, there's just no, um, in fact, so I, I teach a class at Holy Cross, um, in the Education Department. And one of the things I have the students look at is, um, sort of the, the demographic differences of school district lines. So if you look at the highest rate of difference in terms of poverty, like at a, at a school district line, if you look at the top ten in the country, three of them are in Massachusetts. So like, that's how vast it is. Um, so that's the other half of the story, it really depends on poverty. Um, and so for the stu, for the school districts that have poverty rates of, say, group ten, group eleven, group twelve, which in some cases are rural. And because, I mean, again, again, I think the other thing is that sometimes we think, I mean, you know this better than I, rural poverty can be more invisible, or we don't think of it as much. But we do have school districts like that in Massachusetts. Those school districts absolutely saw, like, their foundation, I mean, you see your foundation budget go up anyway just by being in group six or group seven. Um, but for the school districts that are in like eight, nine, ten, like, their foundation budget's taken off.
Now, to speak to that and to speak in levels of fairness, what has the MASC done to support the rural school funding that different legislators in school commi, in school districts have been fighting for for the last few years?
It's one of our priority bills.
Alright, good.
Yeah, yeah. It, uh, came through a sixteen million in the Senate, but the, we were just at Day on the Hill, our lobby day was last Tuesday, it's one of our five bills that are relevant.
It's just hard to take anything when the big number's sixty, and they're talking about fifteen, fourteen, sixteen, like.
Yes. Well, and the other thing that I will say, by the way, is in terms of, and I run to, run into this as a former member of the Worcester School Committee, um, is that when you start talking about how many millions of dollars are going into X, Y, and Z, keep in mind the Worcester Public School Budget, and Worcester, by the way, is one of the few districts that is funded at foundation, but probably gonna be funded below foundation, unless the state counts it together. The Worcester Public School Foundation Budget is, is half a billion dollars, it's five hundred million dollars, because they have twenty-five thousand students. So like, then when you start saying, okay, well, Worcester's getting four hundred million dollars from the state, chapter seventy-eight, well, that's an enormous number, like, yeah, no argument. But it's also because they have twenty-five thousand students, and I think Worcester's group ten now. So like, that's the other part of this, is that you, we also have these, we not only have need concentrated in those few districts, but those are also the biggest districts, um, with Boston being its own little weird outlier, because it's actually not majority state funded. Uh, they're wealthy, they just have a poor school districts. So, yeah, that's what's going on with that. And we'll talk about whole harmless in a minute, because that's also part of your story, and that matters a lot in terms of this.
So I have three, a three-part question, and I'm not gonna ask any more questions.
You don't have to say that, we're here to answer your questions.
Well, I'm telling you that, because I get a lot of eyeballs looking at me. So where?
You have my business cards, you can ask me later.
Where does, uh, that's not gonna happen. Where, uh, where does this state rank countrywide, um, as in education?
Top fifty.
Top what?
Measuring what, the quality of our education?
Top fifty, well, yeah, there's all, yeah.
Depends what chart you look at.
In terms of our quality of education?
Well, uh, it's two parts.
Yep.
It's where do we rank countrywide as, as a state?
Mm-hmm.
For pupils' learning, and what's the cost breakdown for where do we rank in the state per dollar spent on child in this state?
Yep. So usually, usually we are, usually we're number one, depending on how you're measuring. So the, the, the sort of gold standard measurement is the NA, the National Assessment of Educational Progress. Usually Massachusetts is number one, and honestly, if you made, I, I, there's usually a statistic that says something like, and if we were our own country, we would be close to the top in the world.
Okay.
Um, in terms of how much we spend per child, we're in the top ten, but we're usually not number one. Um, it's usually, and you very quickly get into just how expensive is it to live in the state?
Right, it's gotta, it goes by your, your locale.
And so we're, exactly. So we're usually dancing with exactly what you'd expect, New Jersey, Connecticut, and so forth.
Yeah. Yeah. Now, the third part to this question is, the government's very concerned, federal government's very concerned with people not having children anymore. When I grew up, every family had five to seven, eight kids, okay, four or five, and it was shocking to say a family wanted to, back when I grew up.
Mm-hmm.
And, because they're very worried about, obviously, military, um, people working with their hands.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that popular electricians, plow and stuff like that. Is there any foresight in the school system to bring the population, you know, I'm talking, I don't know, most, a lot of millennials, is it millennials now that only have one or two kids?
Excuse you.
Okay. What's that? How many kids you got?
Three, she's doing her part of me, I'm doing my part.
Okay, so you. Okay, well, that's more.
Hey, I had six, oh, like.
But, um, you see where I'm going with this? I just wanna, what's gonna happen when, I mean, if people don't, whether you're.
Yep.
The cost per pupil's gonna go up.
Well, obviously, because you, but you, you're running, you gotta run a school system, so when your population keeps dropping, but obviously, you don't need all the teachers, so you're gonna lose teachers, obviously, and people are gonna lose jobs, you're gonna lose janitors, you're gonna lose whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is there any forecast, is anybody looking into this? Is, or does the state do it, or?
So the state does, well, I mean, and if you wanna say, if you want the spoil.
Or does Quabbin do it, or? I mean.
Uh, well, we.
We don't have to worry about it, I guess, but.
You know, we get reports, so NesDex does, uh, reports, and so we see projections of enrollment, we share those at our municipal meetings.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
We, we are experiencing declining enrollment, and we're on track to continue experiencing declining enrollment sadly, um, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Really? So costs are gonna skyrocket more, you're gonna have less students in school, less teachers, but costs are gonna go up.
Well, if you were.
To maintain these big buildings, uh, I mean, Quabbe Regal's a big school over there, but if your population keeps declining, what do you do, close down sections of the school?
Well, and you.
So, um, I don't wanna derail your show.
No, he, well, no, he wants to, no, he wants to know about Quabbin, and then I can talk about more general stuff.
Is this?
It's a great question, um, so I think a few years ago, we found that we had opportunities to fill our schools a little bit more due to declining enrollment. So we now, um, lease out spaces to an educational collaborative, CAPS collaborative, so we have some classrooms over here in Hubbardston.
Mm, yeah, I agree, yeah. Yeah.
We now have them in Hubbardston, we have them up at the middle high school, we have them at Ruggles Lane as well.
Yeah. So it keeps people working, yeah?
It, well, it keeps our buildings full, right?
Full.
We're taking in a little bit of lease, many of them are, are, some of our students, yes, absolutely, hundred percent.
Our students aren't in them, or they are in them.
Yeah.
We also, um, have a champions program, which is before and after school program, so our kids can stay. Um, we charge them some rent to hold those programs there, so we take in money that way as well. But to answer your bigger question, which I feel like is what you're really kind of asking, is like, what's our projection, where is Quabbin going?
Yeah. Yeah, because I mean, i- if, if the federal government's that worried, which, you know, they have to maintain our safety through military, right? But if they're worried people aren't having the children that they used to, uh, let's say thirty years ago, right? Because they're not, I mean, people today have more than two children instead of four or five. And it's a rare occasion that have three or six, um, but somebody's gotta start opening their eyes, right? And be concerned about this?
Oh, we're very concerned about it, um, but I also think we're trying to be as proactive as possible, so.
Yeah. Yeah, to keep it going, to, with what you have, with the hand you don't.
Yes. Yeah, and we've implemented some, um, innovation pathway programs, like you're talking of, for kids who wanna work with their hands, right?
Yeah, so.
We have three of those, we're looking at use of our new brain tree school in lots of different ways. One of the reasons, um, I, I was thinking about this, but I don't think the number changes, but one thing we also do, um, really well, that I think we're super proud of, is that we have a lot of our own in-district special education programs. So typically, we might send our students out for an autism program, we have our autism programs.
Yeah.
In all of our schools.
Okay.
Um, so we have a lot of those programs that we house as well.
No, that makes a difference, because you're moving kids out of that one percent category.
So.
Yes, yeah.
So you gotta really start, really start thinking about population, thinking way outside the box on what you're gonna do.
We're, we're trying to create as many efficiencies as we can, and I'll stop because I see Nate has his hand up.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I'm, I'm purposely trying to, now, you mentioned autism programming.
Yeah. Yeah.
With the complete upswing in mental health and awareness of the autism spectrum, has that played in terms, and I'm asking questions just to get conversations going, has that played in these budget increases? Or what, what kind of numbers are you looking at now? Because I hear loads and loads of parents, like, oh, I have little Johnny, he's autistic. Is he autistic at the doctors, or is he autistic on TikTok? Like, and that's, where's, where are we with that?
Well, we fully assess students, um, and I think we're pretty good at it. Uh, and because we have our own programs, it does allow us, so there's all versions of a spectrum in particular, um, for all of our disabilities, honestly, right? So I think because, uh, we do have our own district programs, it allows us more flexibility and more opportunity to give students, uh, when appropriate, opportunities for inclusion, to be in the regular class with their peers, and when necessary, to be in that substantially separate learning environment. So I don't know if that fully answers your question, but I think that is, um, something that we, we do do. As far as when you saw the jump in special education, I would say, has mental health played a factor on that? We know, and I, I talked about this last year as well, we have more students who struggle with anxiety, depression, different things like that since coming out of COVID. Has that played a factor in our numbers? It has. Uh, if you're asking me if we feel like we've seen an uptick in diagnoses of autism spectrum disorder, I would say no.
Okay.
And then the only thing I would add to that, in terms of the, sort of the general question that you're asking, kind of on a larger scale, is that, I mean, the same, the story that's here is the same story sort of across Franklin County into Berkshire County.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the places where, um, student enrollment is growing is Metro West, and it's also the cities, and in the cities, it's largely through immigration. So like, in terms of the balances, that's really the way that it plays out.
Thank you.
So, okay, so now we have to get you the twenty-seven, twenty-seven point eight million dollars, or what we said there. And the same thing for really then every city, you know, every school district in Massachusetts. So the first thing to, to know is that underlying all of this calculation is an assumption by the state that the statewide foundation budget, right? So if we took Quabbin's and Wachusett's and Whistler's, and we added all of them up for the entire state, will be funded fifty-nine percent through local funding and forty-one percent through state funding. Okay, so that's the first thing that's gonna happen with the foundation budget, is we're gonna split it that way. Now, when we look at then, how you're going to figure out your local, the local contribution side, uh, we're gonna look at two numbers, the first is the equalized valuation, which is the full, you good?
Yeah, just grabbing, I have hard copies of the presentation that I'm going to hand to Heather, because she likes hard copies.
Okay, yes, there you go.
Welcome.
Just, it's probably not great on photocopy, because they move.
Well, this is fantastic on your screen, I separated it tonight.
As people were discovering, they move a lot, it, it, that's why I have the keyboard down here. I'm not good at a now quick kind of presentation.
Double item. Page ten, top.
Oh, ten now, yeah.
Cut it, top, yeah.
So the, the first number it looks at is the full and fair cash value of all taxable property in the Commonwealth. Please do note that taxable, like, untaxed property does not count against you, doesn't count for you, but does it count against you?
I think you should get rid of fair.
But that's written into the law, so that one's, that one's definitely over mine.
Yeah, well, they better change the law.
And then the other thing that they look at is income taxes that are paid, um, to the Department of Revenue, again, straight from the D O R filings. This is done, we talk about towns, it's done by zip code. So when we're calculating the local share, like, the actual dollar amount that the local side is gonna have to put together, okay? Um, we've said that that's gonna be fifty-nine percent of the statewide foundation budget, right? The forty-one percent's gonna come from the state. So the, the, um, target local share we have is nine, nine billion dollars. But the number that then also stands behind that is the maximum that any local community has to pay of their foundation budget is eighty-two point five percent.
Can you repeat that, please?
So we do, so the maximum any lo, any local community has to spend to fund their foundation budget is eighty-two point five percent. So that nine billion isn't the hundred percent, it's the eighty-two point five percent. So we do what I think of as a little bit of backwards math, now remember, I was an English major, so I think of things like this, this is the algebra, we're solving for X. If nine billion dollars is eighty-two point five percent, what's a hundred percent? Is essentially the question we're asking. So the statewide combined effort yield is, is twelve point six billion dollars. Now, why does that matter? Because the next thing we're gonna do is we're gonna figure out how much of that's gonna come from income, and how much of that's gonna come from property taxes. We're still talking at the state level. The reason I'm explaining this to you is that in a minute, I'm gonna have these two random decimals, and you're gonna wonder where they came from, and the answer is they come from this calculation. So if you wanna kind of surf through this part and take it for granted, that's fine, but if you wanna know where those decimals come from, that's where they're coming from. So the statewide combined, combined effort yield is this twelve point six billion dollars. Half of that's gonna come from property taxes, half of it's gonna come from income taxes. Now, we do know how much the property wealth is for the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we do know how much brought, was brought in in income taxes, again, for the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And now we do, again, so math, right? We're gonna get to half income, half property taxes, how are we gonna get to the six point three for each of them? One of them is gonna have to be multiplied by a decimal less than one, one of them's gonna need to be multiplied by a decimal point one. There will not be a quiz, you do not need to know this tomorrow. But those two decimals are how the state then says to Hubbardston and to Whistler and to Boston, here's how much we think you can afford to fund a public education, okay? Because it does this statewide calculation, and then it does this balancing of income and property wealth, okay? So remember those little, you don't have to remember those decimals, but you'll recognize those decimals, because they're gonna come back, okay? This is the one place I gave you a spreadsheet, because I think it's the most straightforward way of walking you through this, okay? Um, one of these spreadsheets exists for every town in Massachusetts, okay? So you can see the two thousand four equalized property evaluation for the town of Hubbardston, okay? Always is a little bit of a lag. Then this is the uniform property percentage that we just did the calculation for, okay? One multiplied by the other, you get local effort from property wealth of two point five million dollars. Gonna do the same thing with income? Oh, yeah, a little lag. By the way, I forgot that Hubbardston has that little chunk out of the bottom of it, I went down a rabbit hole about that while I was doing this. So for two, we're, there's even more of a lag on income, people do actually dispute their income taxes and have to collect them and that kind of thing. But in terms of how much comes from the town of Hubbardston, then the uniform income percentage is the multiplier, local effort from income is about, is about two point nine million dollars. We add those two numbers together, so the combined effort yield is five point five. The combined effort yield is a way of saying, given the local capacity, how much could you put towards public education? Okay, given the local wealth that you have, how much could you put towards, towards public education? Now, the thing to remember about Hubbardston, and I'm not preaching to the choir here, is that you don't only fund Quabbin, you have kids who go to Monty Tech. So the town of Hubbardston also has its own foundation budget, okay? Even though you're not running a school district by yourself, it's your Hubbardston kids who go to Quabbin, plus your Monty Tech kids, okay? So the town of Hubbardston's foundation budget for FY twenty-six is eight point eight five million dollars. Now, remember, we said no community has to fund more than eighty-two point five percent of their foundation budget? Maximum local contribution is seven point three million dollars. Well, we just said you don't have seven point three million dollars, right? We said you have five point five million dollars. The state's always gonna take the lower of those two numbers, okay? In this case, it's your combined effort yield, that's missing a point of the state, which is gonna bother me a lot. Um, and they then take that as a percentage of your foundation budget. It's sixty-two point four six percent of your foundation budget. Now, that's just a target, we still haven't actually done any, like, we're actually gonna come up with money yet. This is, given what we know of your ability to contribute, what is the target amount, or the target percentage of your foundation budget that the state would like Hubbardston to be funding, okay?
And that's the five point five million dollars?
The five point five million dollars. It, well, no, it's, it's, it's better to talk about it in terms of the sixty-two point four percent of foundation, but yes, for this year, it would be the five point five million dollars.
For about one point five million dollars above that.
What, so that's because you're funding above foundation, but you're also funding transportation, which, right, transportation, which doesn't count, oh, that, do they, they have to put money towards transportation, right? Yeah, so that, the transportation doesn't count towards foundation budgets. Yeah, so that, the transportation doesn't count towards foundation budgets, the other thing to keep in mind. So something that I think is useful for regional school districts to do is to actually look at each, look at the town's target share because it is the set, this standard measurement of capacity to fund, right? So your foundation budgets are gonna be different because like, as you were saying, right? There's a small number, smaller number of New Braintree students. Most of your students are from Hubbard, Hubbardston and Barry, they have more kids. Like, when you start getting into dollar amounts, it can be a little deceptive. But if you think of it in terms of the percentage, given the number of students you have, what percentage does the state think you should be funding of that foundation budget? You get a more of a standard measurement of capacity to fund, okay? And this is something that I think kind of lies behind these annual regional school district conversations that most people don't know kind of this half of the conversation. So I ran you pie charts for each of the other towns, um, in Quabbin region, right? So this is your sixty two point four percent. Blue is always gonna be a local share. For Barry, Barry is actually a majority state-funded target, okay? Um, they're a minority town-funded target. Still close to half, but, okay? Hardwick, um, is actually closer to yourself, right? So it's forty six percent aid, fifty three point three four percent, um, local share. New Braintree, a little closer to three quarters, being funded by the town. Milchem, sixty five thirty five. Okay? One thing I thought was interesting, by the way, is that, um, you're the only, you're the first regional I've had with this many towns where nobody is an eighty two point five percent community, which is interesting. Nobody is actually, um, one of those sort of capped communities. That's a little bit unusual.
Yeah, because Sterling's the only one, if you want to choose.
Sterling, and usually it's Princeton.
Yeah, yeah.
Princeton's really weird, when it comes to figuring out their foundation budget. Yeah. So we're, I think, I'm pretty sure that Rutland is actually the one that's the, the closest to fifty fifty.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just a question on the six point two percent for Hubbardston. Is that what the school takes as what they would get as an income from the town?
No, this is the town saying to Hubbardston, given that you as a town have a foundation budget of about eight point, was it eight point eight million dollars?
The state's telling us, okay.
You are required to, we would, we would like you to be funding about sixty four percent of that. Now, the next step they're gonna do is the, here's how much you actually have to fund, which is a different calculation.
And that, that, that doesn't go by student population from your town?
It does go by student population by your town because your foundation budget is based on your students that are actually coming from your town. So it's given those students, how much of that budget can you fund? And that, that how much can you fund is coming from the income and property wealth.
Okay.
Will this deck be shared with us or is this shared?
I'm gonna share the whole deck.
Yep, once I put that parentheses back in.
And fix the typo of it.
Exactly, once I fix the typo of the, the strange declining special education that happens nineteen eighty nine. Um, so then the next thing they do is actually look at, okay, so, but how much was Hubbardston actually required to fund last year? Okay, so that's a real number, so four point five million dollars. And then there's another number that they take from the Department of Revenue, which is the municipal revenue growth factor, which is exactly what it says it is. It's the amount that municipal revenue grew the previous year. So for Hubbardston, in the past year, the municipal revenue grew by three point five three percent. Now, this, from my perspective, is another one of the things that doesn't get talked about this time of year because we are very, very committed to our, we have proposition two and a half and we think that that's the whole story. But the Department of Revenue notes that actually when it comes to municipal revenue, it doesn't only grow by two and a half percent. By the way, this gives you a preliminary contribution of four point seven percent. Municipal revenue growth factor also includes new growth. It includes your state aid to the town and includes the prior year local receipts. Now, you can actually pull these up online, right? Um, every town has one, Department of Revenue's website. Um, and it will walk you through every part of how do you get to this in the case of Hubbardston, three point seven nine percent, okay? Um, and this is the other number that I've been recommending regionals poll for communities because, first of all, because I think it gets us out of the sort of the, we can only talk about two and a half trap because remember the town, the state isn't only talking about two and a half percent. And so I feel like we end up coming into this conversation from these two different directions where everybody knows two and a half percent except the Department of Revenue is saying, actually, that's not how much your local revenue grew. And then that's what goes into the school calculation. So that's how you end up with this, but how come it's more than that? Well, it's because the, the revenue actually grew from something else, yeah.
Speaking of two and a half, has there ever been a concerted effort on behalf of your organization or on any organization to take the parameters of two and a half and give their school their own? Like, I understand that would be additional taxation, but by.
Oh, have schools have their own ability to tax? That was part of a mass auditor report on regional school districts a number of years ago.
Because the two and a half is just never gonna be enough for the town and the school.
Yeah. I, what I am seeing is some, we're fine, we are getting some conversations about whether or not people wanna actually have a two and a half conversation. That's starting to happen at the state level. Um, as tied really to this sort of larger municipal contribution conversation, which was the one that was very clearly not had as part of the Student Opportunity Act. Like, that was, anytime someone tried to bring it up, they got like, well, if you were there, you might remember. Like, if you were at those hearings, like, it was like, no, we can't talk about that, that's like.
Barbara Anderson died that same year.
I don't think, I don't think it killed her, yeah.
So if the municipal growth factor.
Yes.
Of the three point whatever percent for our revenue, is that automatically applied to the school's number?
Yes.
Okay, so here's the issue, is if the school budget makes up sixty percent of the town overall budget.
Yep.
You've taken all the new growth for the prior year and left nothing for municipal service.
And so that's why I think it's really a good idea. And like, I know nobody wants to like pull off a complicated spreadsheet. Like, I think that people actually pulling these and actually having them on the tables when you have these conversations is probably really good because otherwise we're just having these like, well, where is that required local contribution coming from? And I mean, and, and meaning absolutely no disrespect to like your profession or anyone in mind, most school committees can't explain it either. Like, I, like, that's, they know that that's what the state says and we know that's what the mandated contribution is. We don't moat for the most part know that it's coming from the municipal revenue growth factor. And that's part of why I've started sort of dwelling on it in these. Because I think that it gives people, like, then we all know that we're talking about this sheet. Okay, so let's talk about this sheet, like, where do the numbers, where does it come from? And like, you, I've even had towns that have said, oh, you can actually see exactly where X, Y, and Z happens. Like, we sold town land and that was a weird thing this year, right? And we, I mean, and that's the other thing that is, of course, really important, is that we're talking about communities in many cases where something that's kind of a blip can make a huge difference from one year to the next. And like, making sure that that's transparent on the table is, I think, part of the, the story here too.
So we don't have choices?
You don't have choices, it's part, written into state law.
Change the law, right?
So the other thing that I think is useful is, again, right? Like, this is different from one year to the next in different towns, okay? So please don't think that Hardwick had like a ton of money, remember, this is a rate of change, um, in twenty three. Um, but it does give you some idea, you're actually all hovering close, closer to the same neighborhood this year. Um, but when again, you have these weird years, right? Like, you were having this conversation before of like, what year did you get hit and that kind of thing? Everyone's, like, understands the enrollment conversation, but sometimes it's actually not the enrollment conversation. And then you end up with the municipal side in particular going, where is this number coming from? Like, why did it go up by so much? And then like, maybe Hardwick had that conversation in twenty three, I don't know, they may have. Um, but if your municipal revenue growth factor is like going way up, you're actually picking up more of the cost of your local foundation budget.
Does this include grants?
Does not.
Cause Hardwick got a monster grant around that right time.
Uh, well, actually, it would depend, it would depend.
It was a sui.
As on how, on what kind of grant, where it came in on. And I don't know enough about the, the sort of details of how DOR does that.
Putting water to the, what's the football academy?
You could pull it, you could actually look at.
Oh, Eagle Hill.
Eagle Hill, yeah.
You could actually look at their FY twenty three, it would probably be their twenty four. You could actually look at it and figure it out. Okay, so another useful conversation to have, um, for communities that are together in a regional district. So we said, like, the, the state had set this percentage, right? And now they've come up with an actual dollar amount. The next thing they're gonna do is compare that actual dollar amount to the percentage, how close are you to it? Now, the thing to remember is this, for just about every school district in Massachusetts, your foundation budgets have been going up by, in many cases, quite a lot because of the Student Opportunity Act. Municipal revenue growth factors are not going up by the same rate. Nearly every school district in Massachusetts is below target. That's not any kind of like a moral statement. It's not because anybody did anything wrong or bad or people are falling down on the job. It's just that, it's just math. It's just that one number is going up faster than the other and that's intentional because of the Student Opportunity Act, yes.
Where does municipal tax type plan this? Cause all of these communities, like, you have the Boston's of the world with a tremendous commercial piece of the pie. That is not here.
That's because, so that's why Boston is a, is an eighty two point five percent community. They can more than fund their local community, local school district. Yeah.
Cause this is re.
Now, the other conversation, and this isn't relevant here, but one of the other conversations I'm hearing is that there's a very big difference between a community that's, say, able to fund eighty three percent of their fu, foundation and a community that's able to fund a hundred and fifty percent of your foundation. And we definitely have communities in both categories. And like, that's a conversation, for example, I was having that last year in North Hampton because they're like eighty five percent. So they're capped at eighty two, but their capacity to fund is really not that much bigger than the measurement. Whereas that's not at all the same story as some of their surrounding communities. And it's definitely not the same story as some of Metro West. So anyway, that's what's happening down here, is the short version, right? You're below target, you're nine percent below target, you're brought up towards target. Um, you have an increment of just over seven hundred thousand dollars, which gets you to the four point eight million, that's the required contribution.
Going back to one more question, where would that play with something like a Berlin? Whereas they're very, very similar to Hubbardston and Barry, but have this large commercial base because of that.
Um, except, okay, and, and the weird thing is that I know this because I'm actually, I, I ju, I'm doing their superintendent search. Um, the, the way that, that someone locally put it was unfortunately, they have the Searstown end of the mall, which means, so, and so I laughed too, thank you. Um, yes, that, their end of the mall is not doing as well as the other end of the mall, which is the section that's in Marlboro and part of Vincent Hudson. So, um, yes, I mean, but those things absolutely make a difference. I mean, the other thing that I see, for example, a little bit farther to your west, um, is you know that you can have someone from one year to the next who like moves into town, who's a multimillionaire, who's living on some hillside somewhere. And then they move out and nobody really noticed. But your, your income taxes that are being paid from your zip code suddenly can either spike or go down. I've seen that happen a couple of times. Um, I mean, I think Dalton was actually one of the places that, that had it happen. They had the paper mill, uh, the family had under the paper mill, you know, who's in town, who's not in town, who's actually filing their taxes from, can make a very big difference. Definitely one of the variables, variabilities.
So the more affluent your town is, the more you pay.
The more affluent your town is, the higher percentage of your foundation you pay. And keeping in mind that every community gets at least seventeen point five percent of their foundation budget in state aid regardless of their capacity.
Off the wall question.
Yes.
Cause it's gonna be sound bizarre. What if we went private school in the town, got out of district?
I don't have liability with killing.
So you, so.
No.
Um, in Massachusetts, you have to provide public education in some fashion. Well, you can, there are communities.
The law is in the way.
Right, so you, there are communities that tuition out all of their students to a neighboring district. Um, so for example, Mount Washington, Massachusetts, right? So in the South, right?
So you're still controlled by the state regardless?
Well, yeah, that goes back to the constitution, right? The state says that everybody has to have public education. So really, I mean, that at a ground level is exactly where it's coming from.
So what are they all, school choice then?
It's not school choice, they have a tuition agreement.
Oh.
So it's, they pay more than school choice. It's more than the five, the five K that comes that way. Um, there's usually five or six districts per year that are, and like, it's towns where they have ten kids or, you know, that kind of thing. Then there's a, a school district in the Elizabeth Islands that sometimes has a school district, so it's not, sometimes doesn't, but that's funny details.
So is, is the goal over the six years to get us to the eighty two percent?
No.
Okay.
You will not get to the eighty two percent. In fact, I think that fewer and fewer school districts, they, that we had actually been having more and more towns get to target because they've been being brought up, but the foundation budgets have just taken off so much because of the SOA that I, like, I just, I don't think it's gonna be, I don't wanna say it's not a relevant conversation anymore, but it's certain, I don't think it's gonna happen. Yeah. So remember that, so then you'll see that there's a little bit of an adjustment here in terms of the percentage of, once we get to the required, as to how much is coming in in state aid and how much is the required local contribution. And of course, remember, and I, I mean, I think you would get this from the pie charts anyway, that any community that is funding less of their foundation budget is necessarily then bringing in more of their foundation budget in state aid, cause that's always the balance, right? So then when you start putting together sort of the pieces for Quabbin, you'll see that. So in every case, the state's commitment is to get you to foundation for starters. Um, and they do that by first putting in the local contribution. And then they get you, get you the rest of the way to your foundation budget. And that's your, um, that's your foundation aid. So if we look at FY twenty six for Quabbin, right? What we're gonna do for the regional is we're gonna put, this is their foundation budget, right? Which is that twenty seven that we had before. Um, then we're gonna put in all of the town's required local contributions. So that's what this is. And then, oof, that's not good at all. That yellow line is supposed to be atop that green, it's another idea I think.
I like the yellow line where it is.
Well, no, because this actually turns, turns into another trap, which is the next chart, right? Now, the thing is, and this gets into the conversation you were having before about whole harmless. If Quabbin only got that fourteen point four million dollars in foundation aid, they would be getting less state aid than they'd gotten last year, okay? So there's two secondary commitments that the state has made within the Student Opportunity Act that they used to sort of do it from year to year and now it's actually in the law. Is they say that first of all, you'll get at least the same amount of state aid that you got the year before. Okay, so that's what this is, it's another two point six million dollars. And then you'll get at least a minimum per pupil increase from one year to the next. Now, what's written into the law is thirty dollars. Um, House one has, what I've put here, is seventy five dollars. The, and then if you look at the bottom, I put a note, which is the house budget has passed and the one is and means, which is actually now a deliberation, increase that to a hundred and fifty dollars per pupil, which would make that one forty one instead two eighty two, okay? Now, the thing about hold harmless funding is this. Um, cost increase from one year to the next, even with declining enrollment. So we understand that nobody wants to go backwards. By the same token, it means that there is a decreasing association between the amount of state aid that districts are getting, if they're in this, in this position, and the number of students they have, the measured need of those students and also the capacity of the local communities to fund. So we have this sort of like complicated calculation that's based on some very standard things. And then we get to this stage and say, okay, accept, you know, big asterix, we're gonna make sure that everybody has X, Y, and Z. And that means that state aid then has less of an association in, in these communities from the needs of the students and also the ability of the local community to pay. Now, we had said that we also had, but that's two places to do it. Um, some changes that have happened over the course of time in terms of the foundation budget, but also in terms of, um, the amount of state aid that school districts are getting. So this is going back to fiscal, to fiscal year, um, two thousand and six. And the blue is the local required contribution added together, not broken up by towns. And the green is state aid, the yellow is the foundation budget, okay? So keep in mind that any place where you see green above the yellow, what you've got is hold harmless aid, which has, doesn't have any association with sort of the count, accounts that's going on in the district or also the local town's capacity to fund. What's happening here, in case you thought there wasn't anything happening because of the Student Opportunity Act in Quabbin, is the changes that are happening to the foundation budget as a result of the Student Opportunity Act. And it's this steep because of the rate of poverty in the school district. Now, the trap is that because Quabbin had so much hold harmless funding to begin with, it can't escape. If you look at school districts like Central Berkshire Regional, um, there's a couple of other school districts in the state that I've run this for. The foundation budget has grown enough that they've actually gotten out of hold harmless funding. And the magic there is that you're no longer a per pupil increase district anymore. So the thing that happens is that every time we do this, per pupil amount being bigger, it brings in a marginal amount more for that one year, but it also increases the gap between foundation budgets and state aid that's being brought in and makes it that much harder for school districts to escape. And at this point, I mean, we've done this two years in a row. Um, I think it probably has trapped a significant number of districts, which frankly, I find pretty depressing, but, um, that is where we're, we're at. And honestly, this, we should also keep in mind, by the way, this is actually based on House one two, it's not the House one also. Um, it's not actually based on the hundred and fifty dollar per pupil.
Not, not the one fifty, correct, as you said?
Correct, yes. Um, and I mean, obviously, the largest segment of it is still the whole harmless funding rather than the dollar amount for people. Um, and one of the things I've been reminding, you know, school committees, we even talked about this at Day on the Hill. In fact, our, the MAC president. In fact, our, the MAC president actually even said it at our, our, um, lobby day. Is that, you know, while we can lobby for these per pupil increases, you know, I mean, no one's gonna tell you that the difference between one forty-four and two eighty-two is gonna sort of save the Quabin Regional School Budget. Like, you know, we would be foolish to think that, so, um, keep that in mind as well. And that's the last slide I have for you, but I'm happy to take any other questions you have.
Well, when they take your new growth and figure that in.
Mm-hmm.
And your town is already very lean and, and budgeted at the minimum. I would say we're, we budget at the minimum with little leeway.
Mm-hmm.
And what the hell is going on in the state? Does it all go back to the constitution?
So the municipal revenue growth factor is also, that, that's part of the municipal wealth contribution, right? So if the Student Opportunity Act looked at the foundation budget, once we start talking about the municipal revenue growth factor, we're talking about the municipal calculation. There are a couple of bills that are before the legislature to reconsider that, that half as well.
Yeah, I mean, we.
And that would be part of the conversation.
We'll never be able to expand services in town because of that. How do you expand service? I mean, I, I just, we'll never have a, a, a full-time fireman like other towns have, you know what I mean? Because we can't afford it.
Sure.
So, and, and he, it just, it just, it doesn't make sense.
No, and so.
It's not only that far. At certain times, we're operating down two full police officers. Not because we don't want additional police officers, but because it's not within the budget.
Yep.
We can't fund them.
Right.
Yeah, but the cer- the state is telling us that we have to spend this amount of money, okay?
On schools.
On the schools.
Yep.
And then the school is told they have to spend all of that money regardless of where we put it in the budget, correct?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Well, you're getting a budget from the towns and the state, but it's controlled by the state. The budget is controlled by the state. So you hire within the budget.
Our budget?
Yeah.
No, we control our own budget.
Well, you control the budget, but the money's coming from.
Oh, yes, we.
And the state, and the, and the state.
State and town.
Sorry, I wasn't sure what you meant.
I mean, unless I'm off the wall, the state's telling us what we have to do.
Yep, nope.
Then they're telling you you're never gonna grow.
Right.
You're never gonna be able to fully staff your departments.
There's, you know, they want us to be poor.
So what I would say is that one of the convers- so I would back you up from the municipal revenue growth factor and say that one of the conversations that I'm hearing that actually goes even further back into the calculation is actually the fifty-nine forty-one division. Because the, the, remember, before anything else happens, the first agreement that gets made is that this, the majority of the funding of the whole foundation budget is gonna actually be carried by local communities. Now, I've been asked in this presentation before, okay, but I thought you said that the state was the one that was supposed to be taking care of public education. Why is it that the local communities are having to fund fifty-nine percent of what's required? I'm not, I don't have an answer for that. Like, it happened to be the division that happened when they passed nineteen, in nineteen ninety-three. But I mean, that is one of the numbers that I also urge people to look at, is there, cause they're having this conversation, which is of course happening like everywhere, um, is that number.
So, so let's say a billionaire, I'm sorry, I said I wouldn't ask you no questions, but in my mind it's.
No. Well, we didn't believe you.
So let's say a billionaire moves to Hubbard City with zero children in the school system.
Yep.
What's, what would happen to Hubbard City?
So.
When it comes to school or, or.
Yep.
New growth or, or they take, you know, income wealth or whatever, income taxes.
Right, so it's income taxes, but so.
What would happen? Let's say a billionaire, I mean, let's say, uh, not Elon, cause nobody likes Elon, I like him, but let's say, uh, a trillionaire.
So I mean, we first would assume that they actually were paying their, their income taxes, right? Which like, I know that many times.
Not gonna happen. Well, they probably pay less than I do, right?
Yeah, exactly. Um, so first of all, remember that there would be a multi-year lag, right? So we're doing the fiscal year twenty-six, we're doing it based on two thousand, I believe, twenty-two income taxes. So that's the first trick, is that there's this multi-year difference between that.
So.
So it might bump up in a strange year. I, I mean, the short answer is that it would increase the local, the, the, it would increase the calculation that would, that would be calculating your percentage. But it wouldn't impact your municipal revenue growth factor, which means it wouldn't actually increase your local required contribution.
Good.
So the percentage that's your target would go up and maybe the gap between them, but that needing to make up the space in the gap is so, I don't know, controlled, that I don't think it probably would even hit you down. That's the trick, is that it's actually the municipal revenue growth factor rather than the income and property for a community like yours that makes the difference. If you were at target or you were funding above target, that would be a different conversation, but that isn't, like, that isn't true here. Yes?
Is the state using any metrics to determine the effectiveness of the millions of dollars that they're putting into the Student Opportunity Act?
Yeah, because everybody has to follow, file an SOA plan and they're, they're actually getting reported out by the, at the Board of Education.
Well, I, I'm trying to determine metrics. I know that education scores have been slipping.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're, we're number one in the country.
Mm-hmm.
I can't imagine what fifty is, but Louisiana.
It's usually Mississippi, but yes, Boise.
Tennessee, Louisiana. But, but the, but the bottom line is, for those communities that are getting additional twenty million or thirty million dollars, right? Is the state tracking how their scores are improving or not improving or whatever, related to the amount of money that they're actually just.
So arguably they are, however, keep in mind that those communities are also seeing their costs go up by more than one point nine three percent. So if you go look at what's happening in Gardner or Leamester or Fitchburg, what's happening is rather than their, so you're seeing people are trying to do overrides, people are pulling funding out of free cash. The cities aren't, but the only reason the cities aren't is because their Student Opportunity Act money is funding their inflation. Like, it's not actually, in most cases, it can barely go to anything else because that's what, that's essentially how they're carrying costs. You're gonna see the cities, the cities are gonna get hit in two thousand, uh, in fiscal year two, uh, twenty-eight. Cause that's the end of the student opportunity act.
So they get the extra money, but don't have to prove anything that it's working.
They can't prove anything that's working because it's not actually extra.
That's what I'm saying. Exactly. So we're just throwing money out there.
Two parts.
No, we're fulfilling our constitutional obligation, but.
One, as a former Garter City Councilor, let me go forward and say that that's a significantly easier form of government. Town meeting is brutal, like, so it's much easier to get things passed seven or eight people than it is a room full of, you're four hundred finest.
So. I was just gonna, I, I'm just sorry, I'm trying to get this control thing. So if we override and we say we're gonna give X amount of dollars more, so the town can have a mun- municipality, okay? Um, because of that increase we put into our budget, now the state's looking at, we have more money coming in in taxation. So the schools get more and they squeeze our municipality together.
I mean, it becomes po- it becomes a piece of the municipal revenue growth factor, but only a piece of it. And it depends on how, and it depends on how you're doing the, how you're doing the override and for what, right? Cause like, you're doing different things right now.
And that's where I was going with this next. There's no squeezing from the school. And I came in, I came in hot and I came in wrong. And admittedly, we are, we are a team. And this team needs to be asking people like this to go and represent us to our legislators, saying that we're not fighting each other anymore, like, we're done with this.
Hey, they won't audit in the state, so they're not listening to us anyway.
I'm aware of it, and the audit thing is a whole new, I'm a big supporter of the audit thing.
Right, everybody is.
And to your point, that's why I think that both the fifty-nine forty-one percent and also to your point, the inflation question, because that actually is everybody on this unit, including frankly, the gateways, including the cities, right? Because that, that same question of the split impacts everybody. And the only reason again, that you're not seeing the cities get hit by the inflation rate is because the Student Opportunity Act is carrying their inflation right now, and it'll happen in two years. So in terms of building that team and like who's fighting with who, it's not even just the question of this table, but sort of the bigger table in terms of everybody getting impacted by the same things.
And who do we talk to? Cause I talked directly to our state senator and he goes, oh, I know. I, and like, what level do we have to talk to?
I mean, you could ask him if he signed on to the, the bill that actually would study it. It was filed by Senator Lewis.
He, he told me he was.
Okay, so that's a question.
We'll see.
Yep, it comes up, but I talked to him today, um, Senator Durant.
Is it, is it okay to reach offline to understand how did forty-one fifty-nine change to eighty-two? I'm still just trying to understand.
So the, so the forty-one fifty-one is the whole foundation budget, but every individual town only has to fund the eighty-two point five percent of their own foundation budget.
Which is all the money we bring in to.
So, so we pay above minimum local contribution as a separate.
Yes.
Can't that, any of that be applied towards that eighty-two percent?
So why would you want it to be?
Be- because one seems to be growing faster than the other. And if our minimum local contribu- contribution is really set by the state.
Yep.
And then whatever, lack of state aid, whatever, basically, it just spills over into above minimum local.
Which is at least, I think, at least partly, I mean, I do wanna keep bringing up the things that don't count towards foundation, right? So that's like, it's transportation, it's crossing guards, it's rentals, I don't, again, I'm just making the list that actually is the state. So that is the, that's the piece that doesn't get represented here, is there's a few things that every district, uh, also needs funding for, that every municipality also pays for. Um, but I believe that you're also just sort of straightforwardly over foundation as well. Um, there, I mean, the state collects that data, the collect, the state does know how much every, every school district actually spends. Um, that gets reported, I mean, that was why I knew that it was statewide, it was twenty-eight percent over foundation. Um, they report that out every year, usually around January. Um, but I mean, I think that the measurement you're talking about is so, maybe both so common, right? Um, cause I mean, it's one thing for the state to say this is a fair and adequate minimum, but then everybody's doing another almost third, like one-third more, right? What I don't, I mean, we can have a sort of a philosophical question about what that means, and one of the things I pointed out is usually it's people, to your point, at town meeting who are voting themselves tax increases, right? That's how you get there. Um, which I think is meaningful in terms of how Massachusetts supports public education. But it also, I think, probably does get back into, okay, but again, is it really fair and adequate if most communities are saying it's really not by voting with their dollars? Um, and I mean, that, again, the only way you get back into that is to actually reopen the, bo- reopen the calculation.
The formula, in other words.
Re- yeah, reopen the formula. And I mean, again, in that case, you're gonna get back on the other half of the equation. You're, you're saying, uh, the number I didn't give you, by the way, is that when the, um, Foundation Budget Review Commission was, uh, completed its work in two thousand and fifteen, they said that if it was fully implemented, which it will be in two thousand, uh, eight, in two thousand and seven, two, two thousand and twenty-seven, excuse me, um, it, we would still be seven hundred million dollars short of appropriately calculating special education. And that was ten years ago. So keep that in mind when we have these conversations about like, okay, special education is this percentage and you're doing like the, all the right stuff, right? Autism in service and that kind of stuff. The state said that in the report ten years ago, and that was seven hundred million dollars then.
Now, in your opinion, is there any state that is doing it correctly? Like, we're, we're number one on a lot of lists.
Yeah, and we actually have a better formula than many places. Um, so I, I think there are states that have maybe, I don't wanna say better conversation. The, the thing, in order to have those conversations though, you get into things that are very painful and closer to home, right? So there, so Vermont, for example, you may have seen, is having a conversation about reorganizing their school districts. Because they've said essentially, we can't keep funding as many school districts as we have, it's too rural, we're running kids, like, we're, we have t- for the amount of administrators we have, and it's not like they're over-administered, we have to have fewer school districts. Hugely hotly controversial, like, don't know if it's gonna pass, was proposed by the governor, not sure he'll get through the legislature. Um, but like, those are absolutely conversations that are happening in other states, right? Massachusetts instead sort of says, okay, well, we've got the rural schools built. Like, I'm not saying that either of those is a better answer, but like, if, in terms of what other states are doing, that's the kind of conversation we've had. We've sort of made half a step towards that, where we have sort of conversations about regionalization. So you might have seen your neighbors a couple to the west here talking about maybe having a larger regional school district. Um, again, how far do you wanna run school buses becomes the question. And also, you know, I, I don't have to tell you this, people are attached to their town elementary schools. And that really, uh, very, very oftentimes is where the rubber is. Um, so yeah, I mean, other states do have these conversations. Um, one of the things I always do is go to the National, um, School District Officials Convention to try to go to those. Cause like, we're not particularly rural compared to other places, how are those, you know, communities doing it? But by the same token, they, in many cases, also already have things like county school districts. Now, would you ever make all of Worcester County a school district? I can't imagine, but there are places in the country where they do have some districts.
So that brings me, another question, obviously.
Sure.
So this county, Georgia, has a county school system.
Yep.
State. Now, when you get to a certain age in Georgia, you don't pay any more tax, any more taxes towards the school system.
Mm-hmm.
How do they survive doing that?
Um, so.
Is it, is it put on the other people that are still paying?
Yeah, I would think that they would have to. I mean, most of the places where there's county school system, and correct me if I'm wrong here, most, it's actually the school district that can levy the taxes. Um, and I would assume that that is the calculation that they then make, is that if we're losing this many or this amount, then we have to recalculate based on the amount of people we have.
Um, and I'm trying to turn the conversation to our town, like, um, you know, clearly we, the town struggles because we have a huge budget, budget, like, what do you think can be done so that the town does not struggle in long term? What is being done?
Uh, long-term what is being, I mean, that's part of the.
Or can be done?
Yeah, no, that's part, so, I mean, and that's.
With, with, onerousion started.
No, and I mean, and I think that that is where the fir- the first story is that it isn't only you, right? Which is that, and it, and also that it isn't only your kind of nearest peers, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that's the first step. And then the, the second step is a- is actually having the, okay, what are, what are the, what are the levers that are gonna actually make real difference?
Commercial property.
Well, or like, and, and if you're then getting into the school calculation, right? Which are the, what are the thing, uh, ju- things you can adjust that actually make the most difference? Um, and also I would argue, build the largest coalition, right? Um, now, I know the school side better than I know the municipal side, although the stories that you're telling are exactly the same stories that are, are true many, many places. Um, and everybody has this, I mean, and there's no school district that doesn't wanna have a fire department, right? There's no school district that doesn't wanna have a library, there's no school district. So, I mean, that, it's not like anybody is ever saying, oh gosh, yeah, close the library because we need to make sure we get better funding for schools. Like, nobody wants to make that calculation either. Um, so I, I do think that's it, is that some of this has to get back into saying to the state, look, it's great that we went in and we looked at what actual need was, but now we also need to talk about what the actual need is if we wanna actually have communities that we, you know, that people wanna live in, right?
The answer, the question still remains unanswered. Is something being done or not?
Um, we're talking about state legislature here, which so far, they passed two bills this session, so, um.
Big fat no one.
I can say that, right?
Too more than Congress.
What are they, it is still for, is, I mean, we obviously know that the country is in uproar.
So. This, yeah, so I mean, this time of year, they do tend to focus on the budget. They did only get their committees set up a couple of weeks ago. They have started holding hearings. So some of it is that, which is that it's the first, um, the first year of the legislative cycle. Um, I, I think also, I mean, there definitely is, from what people say and what, what we hear from legislators, the, honestly, there's a lot of concern, right? Like, what's gonna happen, to your point, like, what's gonna happen with our federal funding at the, at the state level? What's gonna happen to the econo- I mean, there was just a new projection saying that Massachusetts, um, economy grew at a smaller rate than the national one. The national one was small, was particularly small the last two quarters. Um, and I know that every time one of those headlines comes out, we get another round of like, the ways and means chairs start pulling out their hair. So, like, that's part of what they're responding to too, which is that, I mean, I know that at least a couple of people have heard from the legislators, like, I mean, you heard more positive things than many, because I know there are people who are like, we're not looking at it.
Well, it's for the commission.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Right, um, so like, I know that that's part of the calculation too, which is where are we at with all these other pieces?
We have heard the way. So we're at stalemate, really, we're in stalemate in the state.
We maybe. Yep.
I'd like to ask a question concerning that special ed.
Yep.
As far as the oversight up there or, uh, or how much independence to the foundation? Because about four years ago, we, we really got hit, um, because of special ed. We, uh, we begin behind the eight ball when we're budgeting, knowing what we're going to get from the school.
Mm-hmm.
We're behind it. And on that particular year, special ed, which was mandated.
Yep.
By the state, was twelve and a half percent boom.
Yep.
At which we had no control over, and there was no way that we could do anything with our budget, but we had to absorb that.
Yes.
Now, what is the oversight on that, that can be done?
That, that increase actually came from the state. Cause the state actually sets the tuition increases for the seven six six first.
Yeah, but how does that affect this overall?
It doesn't, no, that was actually part of the argument that many of us made, which is that you know our.
So that, they could do that again, and, and it's.
They could. In that particular case, they were, they had been funding something out of state pandemic aid and removed it from that. And then the, the school districts ended up carrying the cost.
And that's independent of this whole thing?
It is, and that was, that was exactly, we went back to them on, which was, how can you say? It is, and that was, that was exactly, we went back to them on, which was, how can you say, like, that our inflation rate is one point three five percent, or whatever it was that year, and you're increasing our tuition cost by twelve point five, yep.
Right.
Nope, share your outrage on that one.
Has there been a conversation at your level or even higher about the municipalities and the schools partnership on facilities? Cause right now, we, for the last fifty years, have done a solid C, C minus in taking care of facilities. We're really working on it and trying to get better. But we have to pay for our own stuff, and it's hard to get a fire truck, it's hard to get all these different things. I'm also looking at my capital plan and going, all right, the school system wants us to do the parking lot, like, is that playing anywhere? The fact that there's additional costs outside of?
So, regional school districts run their own capital budgets, municipal school districts, as you probably know from Gardner, like oversee the school side. Um, I think that, like, every time I go to, I, later this week, I'll go to the state school business official conference, there's usually at least one, how do you work with your town on capital stuff, kind, cause exactly what that division looks like varies widely across the state, right? There are places where the, the community, the municipal side does all of it, they own the building, they do the cleaning, they do the whatever. There are, I mean, it's trickier with regionals, but sometimes they're, make those deals with the towns, too. Um-
It took two years, and a lot of cup shaking.
Where does the capital budget, where does that come from, the capital budget money?
For the-
Obviously, not the state.
For our projects?
Yep.
We come back to the towns with that, when we-
We, we pay it.
Yep.
Like, we had our chiller project not that long ago, yep.
The last one was the chiller, chiller, well, the roof.
The chiller project.
The roof, yeah.
Yep, the roof, yeah.
The roof. The chiller, the chiller.
But we, yeah, but you tell us when we can have meetings and what time.
Boiler. We did a boiler.
And the-
So we don't run our, we don't run our schools anymore, we used to own the elementary school and take care of it.
Still do, still do.
Yeah, we still do. Well, we, we do, but the roof leaked for like fifteen years before it was fixed.
The town paid for it.
And we had to do-
Right, so they-
Right, in the town.
And it, it would've been a split with the state school, school building authority, which you get in a-
Right, it was, yep, yep.
Was leaking prior to that, but I mean-
You get in a list, essentially, and that would be then why the towns weren't having to fully fund the project, cause the state picks up part of it, if you do it through M S B I.
Right. So, I, and, and this may not involve you, but-
Most of it doesn't, I don't actually work for the state, so I just explain, I just explain them, I don't work for them.
Oh, okay, alright. So, we have a, our, our school, we're paying for the roof, paying for the cooler thing, the boiler, everything.
Chiller, boiler, yep.
Right, okay. Um, we're renting space. How much money do we get for renting to cap? How much money do they give Hubbardston Center School?
It goes into our budget as a revenue source.
Right. Right, so, but how much do we get a year from?
I don't, I don't know the number of classrooms up the top of my head.
And it probably isn't just for Hubbardston, right?
Well, you must have a daily, you charge them daily, I mean-
It's for all of it. We charge them monthly.
Monthly, what's the monthly thing?
Yep.
I just honestly don't know what, how many classrooms they have right now.
It's by the classroom, and I don't, I can't tell you where, I don't have the top of it.
Yeah, but we can get that for you.
So, if, if, if rental, yeah, so if-
Well, I, I would think you would know it, I would think you would know it, cause it's a big resource.
And it's factored in.
Yes.
I mean, it's a, it's-
It is revenue that comes in.
So, again, if rental, a school building that, you know-
The rent is-
Is it considered a part of the bill?
Whatever that, another, come on, Hubbardston's, yes.
Yeah, but we, no, not for the, yeah, not for the-
I mean, no, not for the-
No, it's right, it's right out to all five houses.
It's not, it's right out to all five houses.
It goes to their revenue.
It goes to your revenue, so that money that we make on the school, that rental property, say, should go back to fix the roof,
It is, it is a revenue source.
and it should fix the ar- the odd.
Yeah, any revenue in that building should go to the capital of that building.
So, the way we use that revenue, I'll tell you straight up, is that we charge custodial services to that revenue.
Yeah. Okay.
Because they're cle- you know, now we're cleaning additional classrooms, and we're paying for our, yeah, yes.
So your rental revenue is paying the custodians to, to work out, or twenty, or thirty?
Wait, 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 wait.
And that's, and that's, and that's why most school districts do-
You're using the rental money coming in, where is it going?
Yep.
It pays for custodians, because the school district's being used more.
So, I mean, a, a doctor's, a doctor's office is fifty, we used to be fifty dollars per patient-
Yep.
that comes in the room, so they see twenty patients, it's pretty easy math, and I can't understand why we can't get the answer.
It's, it's, I do not wanna give you an incorrect answer, so let us just check our numbers, I'll gladly come back to you, we pay, we charge by classroom,
Well, of, of-
by the month for the spaces, it's not a large amount of money by classroom.
And they, do they do the twelve months, or is it only?
Caps is with us for twelve months, yes.
Or actually, technically, eleven.
Eleven, right.
Yeah.
Because they do summer programming, but they have a short window of summer programming.
So, that's what I wanna know, is why aren't, why can't the towns, it's not just Hubbardston, you rent almost in every town now? New Braintree, what's Berry and Middle High?
No.
No, New Braintree, middle high school, yep.
You rent?
Yep.
But what about New Braintree, that's a-
Those are our kids.
Those are our programs.
Those are our own programs.
Right. But you have that school that you're taking care of, or not, and there's only kindergarten and?
Preschool and post-reg, yep.
So what goes in the, there's no one else in the building?
Right, there's no one else.
You don't rent any revenue?
No.
No.
Mister Chair, what did you want?
No, I wanna, we need to put an end to this now, cause we have, some of the things we need to move on to.
So you can get back.
I will send it to Nate tomorrow.
Alright, alright.
Thank you very, very much.
Of course, you're welcome, and as I said, I think I shared my contact information with most of you.
Everybody else, thank you for the questions, but we have got to move on.
Absolutely, you've got business to do. Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, well, I'm glad.
Thank you for answering my questions.
I'm, well, and I appreciate the level of interest, actually, it always bodes doing our bonuses. Yep. Mister Chairman, should we take a five-minute recess? Five-minute recess to let people?
Oh, well, I hope this changes.
Thank you, Mike.
But we're not gonna-
No, I appreciate you being here.
We're not the rest of the nation either, though.
There are absolutely were.
We just have to do hours, and we go, cause they got financing afterwards.
Questions that you made all the difference. Well, we don't wanna, you know.
I do appreciate it, how you said they were our kids, by the way.
Sit on your side.
They are, they are.
You could, you could. I actually enjoy sitting next to you, so I can get your crazy motion.
We're, we're recording this, people, the hearing of this.
I'll go do my jobs.
No, Rosemary, you gotta come sit.
Without Rosemary, there's not a quorum of the finance committee.
Oh, oh, omit, snuck in.
I tried to talk to you at market basket yesterday, but you were running around.
Everybody speak up, cause people aren't gonna stop over there, so, moving on, uh, to the select board business, uh, the compliance actions. Nate, what, what just happened and what we need to do?
Thank you, Mister Chair, thank you, Mister Chair. Uh, with this, long story short, there was one more thing that we should've done. I will take the full brunt of this, I'm also glad we caught it, because it was, it wouldn't have been a pretty thing to fix from after the election. So, we are proposing the movement of the election from June tenth to June seventeenth.
June tenth.
I will let Melody speak to that.
From June, yeah, that's, yeah, well, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Election, yeah.
Election, yeah.
So basically, the select board, uh, is supposed to provide in writing the exact wording of any ballot questions, um, due to all the Mass General laws on Proposition Two and a Half, and thirty-five days ahead of time would've been last Tuesday, um, and we discovered it afterwards, so, thirty-five days ahead of time of June seventeenth will be tomorrow. So if we, if you agree to vote for these, then I can put them on the ballot, and we can just po- postpone the election by one week.
And the alternative would be to have a special election within thirty days?
Later, yes, yes.
So, saves us money.
And we, legal council agreed with us.
We have yet to post the, I have yet to post the mark for the election, so-
Yeah. And there's no contested races.
Yeah.
And the, and the, the question, excuse me, the motions, we've already covered all of them, as far as-
You did, you just have to cover, you just have to accept the actual wording.
But we just need to make the motion to- No, we're not gonna discuss are we gonna put the fire truck again, it's just, we want the motion, right?
No. No.
Okay.
Okay, so, with that in mind, uh, excuse me, we need to vote to reschedule the annual town election. So, the proposed motion here is to move to reschedule the annual town election to Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Fifty-three, Section Ten, and notify the town clerk for all required filings and postings.
So moved.
Second.
Take motion, may as second, uh, any questions, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, opposed, motion carried. Uh, second motion, to approve in-person early voting schedule for the submission to the Board of Registervars. Uh, with another motion to approve the following in-person early voting schedule for the annual town election on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and refer to the town clerk slash Board of Registervars for final confirmation and execution of exact dates and times.
So moved.
Move, and second, thank you, any discussion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Uh, question three, vote to place debt exclusion questions on the ballot, two-thirds of vote required. So I need a motion to place the following debt exclusion questions on the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five annual town election ballot. Question one, shall the town, do, I need to read all this to the file, right?
You should.
Shall the town of Hubbardson be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One-Half so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to purchase and equip a new fire truck for the fire department? Question two, shall the town of Hubbardson be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One-Half so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to purchase and equip a used plow truck for the Department of Public Works? Question three, shall the town of Hubbardson be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One-Half so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to purchase and equip a new brush mower for the Department of Public Works? This is, motion has been made on second, any discussion on this?
Well, we haven't made the motion, or second, we can get it.
Oh, I thought it was, I thought we had, okay.
Nope, so moved.
Second, for discussion, I have several questions, Nate, Legal looked at these?
Legal has looked at these.
Okay. That was it, go ahead.
Anything else?
And as you know, there are certain parameters of what you can and cannot say. Price is also something you cannot say, and a fiscal year is something you cannot say, there's a bunch of restrictions.
These are debt exclusions, correct?
Yes.
Will it save that?
No, no, it's a legal word.
The debt exclusion falls under the parameters of Proposition Two and a Half.
Yeah, I know it does.
And what's the date of town meeting, June sixteen?
Seventeen.
June second?
No, 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 I'm sorry, town meeting.
July sixth.
June second?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll have the opportunity to explain these three things at town meeting, hopefully, before someone votes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, cause they're gonna see crop two and a half, and it's gonna be an automatic no.
It has to pass the vote.
Yeah.
Well, has, yeah.
But sometimes this comes up first, and then the other comes up second, and you're-
Yeah, one, a lot of people don't understand that debt exclusion.
To the debt.
I have it, it still hurts, but.
All right, uh, any further discussion on this one? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, opposed, motion carried. Uh, next, we need a vote to approve.
Mister Chair, this one I don't think you have to read, you can just mention that it is attached to the, to the document.
We don't need a motion, then?
No, you do need a motion, you just don't need to read this document.
You need a motion, you don't have to read the huge thing.
All right, so then what, a motion to approve summary language for each ballot question?
As attached.
As attached. I do wanna read that, yes, okay.
Read this part, that's all you want.
That's what I'm trying to, but everybody's saying you don't have to read it, okay? We need a motion to move to approve the summary explanations for the debt exclusion ballot questions. Fire truck, plow truck, brush mower, as prepared by the town clerk for inclusion on the official ballot for the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five annual town election.
So moved.
Second for discussion?
Motion moved in second, and discussion, go ahead.
I just question Nate, I don't remember, it's been a while since we've done one of these, do we usually have these explanations and stuff on them? Yeah, so apparently Hubbardson adopted, adopted the special act that has moved on. Adopted the Mass General law?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've had yes and no's.
Okay, and then the yes and noes, we generally prepare through Legal, or we've asked for people to submit them? It's supposed to be asked for people to submit, we had multiple people work on them in this instance to submit to, to Legal, and they said it could either be you guys approving it, or town administrator and chair working on them, so, okay.
Hold on.
Yep.
So, the only question I have is, if, if these debt exclusions pass at town meeting, how long will these debt exclusions be on your tax bill?
As long as you set them, cause you, you are on the board that sets the length of the borrow.
Term of the law. Okay, so we haven't gotten to that, so we gotta wait for it to get approved, it's approved.
No. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
But we would, we would be making that decision sooner, cause that would come up at town meeting, when we talk about the appropriation amount,
I would think so.
which will be two and a half weeks prior to this vote.
Yeah, but the appropriation or the first payment would be due to F Y twenty-seven, so it would be appropriated as fiscal year.
Yes, but we don't have any years we're gonna spread it, and we have an estimate of the cost, and we'll, we'll have more details for residents at town meeting,
Yeah, so they can-
and before they vote on this.
Cause they're gonna, I mean, I wanna know, I do wanna know.
Anything else on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And finally, uh, we need a motion, I'll just read it, to move, to authorize the submission of a special act, Governor's Bill, relating to the twenty twenty-five annual town election to a legislative delegation for filing.
So moved.
Second for discussion?
You had a discussion?
Well, I have, uh-
Motion made in second, go ahead, discussion, yes.
Just before I left, I received an email from K P Law.
Just the one you wanted, your signature in mine, um, that one?
Well, no, so, I mean, it's a long document, which is the Governor's Bill that the town council drafted up,
Mm-hmm.
which needs additional information, such as when the date is and all this stuff, and she, I mean, I, if anyone wants, I printed all out the email in the actual letter, but she s- said, uh, you, has to be approved by unanimous vote of the select board, and approved by the town state senator and state representative. So this is just the document that's been prepared by them, um, it's not to sign today, because obviously, it's not finalized.
Who has to sign that, it's?
So it would be the select board and Senator Durant and the state representative.
A whole board?
Yeah, all five.
And then get submitted as a study. The board, and then God, yeah.
So I imagine this would go before your select board meeting on the nineteenth.
If, if they vote on it this evening and are in favor, you and I will work to draft it up, I'll reach out to the legislative designation.
Well, if we-
So we have it for next Monday?
So we have it for next Monday to be signed by the board at that meeting.
Yeah.
So in a nutshell, what is the special act?
It's the governor waving their hand, saying, just in case some of this wasn't okay, it's okay now.
Being okay, depending the date of the election, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Would you like to look at it? Or take it for your, really?
Because there are, like in the Constitution earlier, the charter is ambiguous in language. Like, it says the select board can move in an election, but it doesn't say to what extent.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so this is giving the permission to actually move the date, got it?
I only read her-
Yes. Well, it's giving, you can give permission to move the date, this is the governor saying that nothing bad will happen, so we can move the date.
You want the permission?
Well, yes. Okay.
It's been drafted by K P Law.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be very long. So does that mean, so, question I have, how long is this for?
For the specific instance, you want? Can I just have a little see?
How long is this for?
I don't want that.
So, would the, all the entire election be held, 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 until this?
My, their bill, and I start crying.
No, no, we're moving on, should the select board make the decision to do this? We're moving on under the belief that it is legal, because legal council said it was.
Okay.
But, we also want to have this additional cover- But we also want to have this additional coverage from any sort of, it is going a bit further than I personally believe we need to go, but if Legal Counsel is going to recommend it, I, that's what I pay them for.
So I want to add do some, something similar to this, I was in a TA position and we didn't post the warrant for the elec- for the election that had the highest turnout in municipal history, and we did one of these and they turned it around really quick.
And they was?
They turned it around really quick, cause the moderator refused to swear anyone in.
I see.
When your select board and your state designation, delegation are all in agreeance, I can't imagine the governor's office is gonna hold something like that up.
I only have one dumb question, when they see, say unanimous, do we know if they mean unanimous of those present or unanimous of those in filled seats?
It says, it says thus, it is best if a request to the governor for submission of special legislation is approved by unanimous vote of the select board, which I would assume is all five of you.
Well, tonight we can only vote of unanimous.
Well, unanimous of course, it's precedent.
Do you, do you want?
Someone's gonna have a lot of questions on Monday.
Well, do you, the question is, do, do you, is it beneficial for us to vote on it tonight and then once it's prepared and finished, it can be signed as needed so that it's ready to go?
Yes, yes, so vote to authorize what I've put forward here, and then on Monday, I will bring it back
Yeah.
and you guys can vote to finalize it as presented, and at that point, we'll know, I can't imagine Donnie and Peter would have an issue,
As written.
but we'll, we'll have a answer from them as well.
Okay.
I think we already had a motion in the second.
Yeah, I mean, it's been second, any, nope, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, all right. Um, I take care of that aspect, we only have two other people in the room, the town administrator presentation.
I'm going to excuse myself.
Thank you, Mel.
Thank you, everybody.
Will Chris be able to sign this even though he wasn't here?
What?
We're gonna vote, oh, we're gonna vote it in, okay, we're just voting, move this forward. I can ask a question now?
I'm gonna fly right after this.
Chris isn't here tonight.
If, if, everybody here, I don't wanna take up a bunch of time and make a presentation, so if everybody could take two minutes
Oh.
to read budget provision four, I will then open for questions.
Yep.
Is that what I looked at today, earlier?
Yeah.
Not that I went up the seat.
This one, yeah, right?
Well, it's my budget number.
The one that says, we need to fix budget revision four.
Yeah. Well, yes, I'm gonna crush them.
Budget revision.
Everybody should have had a presentation and a salary summary and, well, this is annoying.
In, in an effort to continue quickly after this, I will speak now and state that what this is essentially is the Quabon Regional School District assessment that I sent you all the other day came in a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, something change, lower than our previously projected number, it went down approximately two percent.
Something.
And with that, I then had to make a proposal to you guys with a, with what to do with that money. So I took a little bit of the pressure off of our fiscal neck on the revenue sides, kind of giving us a little bit of space to create free cash, took free cash out of the operating budget, in re- in revision three, there was ninety-nine thousand dollars of that. Made a couple of strategic increases, it, uh, fully funding road maintenance to what the director had asked, adding a fit to police operations, which will be coming up at the finance committee meeting later tonight, cause we've had a few issues with turnover and personnel management, and just making a few different additions.
That's not it, that's.
As outlined in budget provision four.
But I remember reading it.
Yeah.
I really appreciate the school and their willingness to work with us this year, but.
Did they save where the cuts came from?
They got more money from the state.
They got more money from the state.
Yeah.
There's no cuts, maybe.
There are no cuts. No, they don't cut.
That's ridiculous in the school, you can't worry, okay?
They'll cut when the population goes down, cause they'll have to cut.
They just reduced the money.
Oh, how nice is that?
We cut.
They don't cut, spend it all, so they're gonna raise it the following year.
Learn all about it.
No, they're gonna start.
So what do you need from us?
We're writing on it.
I need you to ask him the right question.
Yeah.
So, from the board's point of view, are we all set? Heather, so forth?
I'm good, yep.
For all the ballots? On this, no. All right, then we will move, uh, on our part to adjourn.
Does anyone have any questions?
That's why I was asking, we all set on this, yeah.
On what? Cause this is, we don't get this opportunity all the time, and I understand it's late, but.
So, so did you, what's the total amount of money that you spent out of that hundred fifty-nine thousand? You did?
Not spent all of it, spent is a, or.
We reduce reliance on other revenue items, which helps generate to free cash.
Okay, did any money go to free cash or not?
I was, I was using any free cash.
No.
We're not using any free cash.
Not using any free cash, because.
Are you putting any in the?
This year?
No.
So you just reallocated, it was a free cash, so, you got rid of the free cash one time, excellent, thank you.
We're balancing. Well, that's not true, the, the grant money is still in there and it strategically funds different, different.
You're giving parts an extra point, right?
Yep.
Doesn't help debt, debt exclusion.
We all good?
We're together to get a mulch donation and five hundred dollars in flowers.
Do you need anything from the slide board relative to the budget?
I do not.
If we have a motion to adjourn for the second.
So moved. Second.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Slenderwood, part of the meeting, we're adjourned.
I didn't use it, we reversed order on the most important.
You guys mind if I stay sitting here? I don't wanna move into the hard benches, they earned. This chair is any.
You can be a proxy, I'll go.
I still have to go clean the library, so.
Do you read all this stuff or? Okay, I'll leave it.
Certain amount of money, you take it, read it, so I, we have quite, one answer for questions.
I read it anyway, I would read it anyway before that.
I know, I'm just saying.
It doesn't offset it. They only cover five thousand dollars. But we have to rewrite the agreement.
I think I'm so rare, well.
Was that you with Markiavazki yesterday?
I thought it was me, Markiavazki.
All right. Was that with the kid?
I only saw your phone.
Oh, okay, that it was definitely me.
It was no subcommittee meeting posted, are we online?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, see y'all, will you stay?
I'm, yeah, I don't know.
Oh, you're gonna do it.
I don't really care. You don't wanna say things that.
I always, I always watch the MacFlurs anyway, sometimes I watch them live.
I don't have your time.
Well, I'm behind a little bit, so don't, don't, help me.
All right, see y'all, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peter.
All right.
All right, we'll continue the finance committee meeting at eight nineteen, slide board have now left. Uh, we have two final things to do this evening, uh, well, actually, kind of two of that. Tonight's our opportunity to read my recommendations on the warrant for the individual articles for the annual town meeting, and finally, Nate has prepared a reserve fund transfer for four items, uh, that should be in your package while we, we'll do that second. And Nate's bringing up the annual town meeting warrants, uh, first, several articles under the consent agenda, uh, that will be passed as one motion for articles one through.
Five.
Five, uh, those are the traditional articles that are passed each year without any general discussion. Vice committee, have any recommendations on the consent agenda? If you wanna make, so.
You, oh, motion to.
A motion to recommend.
Motion to recommend, yes, thank you, you have a second?
Yes.
Oh, you say.
You can second, okay, any comments, concerns? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Good.
And that was one through six, sir, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine, all right, Article seven is, prior year bills.
Prior year bill. This is an article, as we've spoken about before, for assistance bills, Verizon, Amazon bills, there was a turnover in the position of executive assistant this year, that's usually when a lot of these happen, I've seen more prior year bills result from turnover than anything else, it's four hundred and fifty-three dollars, we do owe the money, and I would like to pay it, so they stopped emailing us.
Okay, you have a motion?
Motion to resume.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Okay, perfect, great.
Article eight is the town's municipal operating budget.
Eleven million, eight hundred, four thousand, five hundred, four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Can you scroll up a little bit?
So is this everything except the school, correct?
Everything except the school, yeah.
Okay. And you gotta change the wording of that?
Yes, I'm gonna change the wording in the final motion document, which will have probably.
Changing the wording? Yeah, yeah, but the total amount does not change.
Total amount will not change, un- unless.
Yeah, perfect, the funding source will change, but, okay.
Yep.
Administratively, things may change, but the.
Number of.
The numbers and bulk of the document, and as you know, the town pursuant to the town charter approves the budget in general buckets like this, and that is the legal parameters of the budget. The attachment A, as attached in, as presented at nauseam by me for the last month and a half, is actually a recommendation that has very little legal standing in a binding sense.
And that increases from reevaluation, did we have a reevaluation come in last year?
We did, but that doesn't really play too, too much in, the increase in the budget is revenues v expenditures, like.
No, I mean tax-wise, did we bring in more taxes last year?
Yes.
Absolutely, that's what I.
Because it was a reevaluation here.
Okay.
Good.
Make motion, do we have to?
You have made motion on Article eight?
Yes.
Yes, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article nine is three hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars for the assessment at Monticentia Regional Vocational Technical School District. It is higher by forty thousand dollars, but it went down by ninety thousand dollars last year, so.
Student population change, okay, you have a motion on Article eight?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, please, number ten?
Article ten is the annual operating budget for the Quabon Regional School District, it is not the number, this number is gonna change, it is, Mr. Chair, please.
Four hundred one fifty-six, six.
Someone that doesn't like paper, I sure have a lot of papers.
Six, six, two nine, one, two, three.
Six billion, six hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars.
So like.
I'm gonna have that.
Yeah, put down.
Motion to recommend the change, no motion.
Okay, second, all in favor? Aye, perfect, okay, thank you, I hope the presentation was better than everyone.
Aye. Yes, it was.
Okay.
It was very nice.
Yeah.
It was, still, I still need to understand that forty-one, fifty-nine, eighty-two, I was so lost at that point, I was like, she just said two for forty-nine.
Article twelve is to vote from free cash, six thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars for, no, yeah, six hundred, one hundred and thirty dollars for Board of Health bills, land capping, and it's as the chair mentioned the other week, it's.
What, you skipped eleven?
Skip eleven, yeah, the fifty-five thousand, for the debt, after the chiller.
Skip eleven, yep.
Oh, yes, my apologies, Article eleven is the Quabon Regional Debt Assessment, it is fifty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars, it went down a bit this year, and that is a action that happened fully because of the Hubbardson Select Board, uh, two years ago, where they did not just accept the debt as presented, but instead spoke and entered into an intermunicipal agreement to ensure that everyone was paying fair values and you did not benefit for being able to pay upfront. So that is fifty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars, I believe it's the chiller and maybe only the chiller, but it might be another small piece as well.
Okay, you have a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, twelve.
Now the heavily riveting Board of Health capped dump, six thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars.
Capped dumps. And they're going to petition, but this will be the last year, so, that's good.
Yeah.
So we have to pay that this year?
This is, well, hopefully it's not last year.
Last year.
Yep.
And it is my intent, if they come back and tell us that we still have to pay it, to put it back in the operating budget. My predecessor and Ms. Handgate's, Hansgate's predecessor entered into some sort of deal a few years ago where it was taken out in terms for more of their revenue into the revolving fund, it ended up being a lot more of a mess than we anticipated, so Kathy and I have got that under wraps at this point and we'll figure out what we.
Make motion that we accept.
Second, and all in favor?
Article thirteen is the prudent investors.
Yeah, that's. The motion will have the best role in it, and then, this is accepted.
This, yes.
Yes, okay. Basically, this just gives the authority of the town treasurer how to invest our money and defer maximum refund.
And as pointed out during the public hearing, we have a financial advisor, it's not Mary spinning a wheel, and, right?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I thought it was throwing dirt.
Yeah, 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 so, um.
I'm, 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 well.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And there's so much red tape around. Article fourteen, ten thousand dollars from free cash for the purpose of grant services.
Yep.
Yes.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good.
Article fifteen is the standard article for peg funding, thirty thousand dollars for salary benefits, committee stipends, which there are none, and I keep meaning to remove that every year, but don't for some reason. That's peg access, it is not taxation, it comes from the cable bills of people who subscribe to Spectrum.
That's. Right. Perfect, okay.
Who have a motion? Motion to recommend.
Second, all right, good, all in favor?
Second. Aye.
Yes.
Article sixteen is the use of forty-five thousand dollars in, for the creation of a meeting room at Forty-Eight Gardner Road and the movement of equipment, it is my hope that we don't get anywhere near that, but that is the.
Quoted amount.
Is the, it's not even a quoted amount, we're.
Assumed amount?
It's the safe amount, just, I'm hoping to land near thirty.
Okay. Okay.
Motion to recommend.
This is also not taxation, it's.
All in favor? Okay.
As outlined by Mrs. Young last week, I do have, if anyone is interested, a document outlining the next five or six years of peg revenue, and the peg, it gets a little dicey right now, because as people cut the cord, it's creating a downturn in this revenue stream, but there are four or five, if not more, different legislative actions in the state legislature to seek to provide this sort of financial relief for public access television through streaming, and I can't imagine a majority of legislature is going to vote to gut public access television, so I personally feel that it's.
You're just shifting it from cable box to streaming.
It's more, it's more of a when, but not a if, Spectrum, the exminis of the world will fight that, but.
Yeah. Yeah. Just gonna pass it on to the customer, so. Alright, capital planning, Article seventeen.
Is a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars from several different sources, hundred and thirty five thousand from free cash, twenty thousand dollars from the twenty twenty four special meeting municipal opti- optimization special fund reclassified because it was covered by a grant completely, and thirty thousand from the Holden Hospital account to pay for the following fiscal year twenty twenty fi- twenty twenty six. I will go fix that. Cash expense, including all costs, incidentals and related thereto. Annual road improvement, one hundred thousand dollars. Annual technical infrastructure support, twenty thousand dollars. Fire department pickup truck replacement, sixty five thousand dollars.
Okay, you have motion?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any comments, questions? Okay, all in favor?
Right.
Okay.
I'm uncertain if the finance committee has previously voted on CPA articles. You can if you would like.
I don't know, that's good.
Do you want to skip them?
Yeah, uh, I mean, does it add value?
Oh, it adds value to a town. It is technically tax money, but it's it's managed by this CPA.
It is. But we oversee it.
We don't oversee it.
Why am, why don't we oversee?
Because we have, there's a separate oversight board that reviews and handles that. We can recommend it because it's the spending of town funds.
Right.
You know, so, it's up to you.
You have the, geez, well, I'll let you decide.
Alright, well.
I would recommend.
We'll make, we'll put the recommendation, okay?
Yeah.
Alright.
Great.
Okay. Uh, Article eighteen is to pay prior year debt, last day.
Yeah, it, this is, this is to pay the last payment of the playground debt.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll do, let's do them all as one CPA. So Article nineteen is to transfer the total of forty thousand seven hundred and ten
Yeah, you can pay them.
from accrued community preservation money and ten thousand from historic and thirty thousand from designation reserves to fund rehabilitation projects in the library basement. This is forty thousand dollars to get the library basement to a point where Chris's office is down there and it is usable. It is not the eventual and hoped-for investment into that area that would create, say, a reading room or things like that. It is cleaning it up, making it usable space and, yeah, doing that.
Okay.
And, uh.
Okay.
Article twenty is a whole bunch of legal red tape that we have to do every year, setting the parameters, much like Article six on the town side. This sets how much the, of the CPA money could be spent and on what. It would still need a town meeting vote, but these are the numbers that could be spent in any fiscal year.
Okay, okay.
And that is it.
Okay.
Second.
You have a motion?
Seventeen.
Eighteen through twenty.
Seven twenty.
Motion to recommend?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Aye. Okay. Perfect.
Article twenty one is the acceptance of a where's the wording from the, oh, this is, I thought this was Williamsville. Article twenty one is the acceptance of the building
The church.
that is known as the First Parish Unitarian Church located at Two Main Street.
Oh, yeah.
It also comes with approximately twenty five thousand dollars. That does not need to be accepted on the town meeting floor and can be legally accepted by the select board.
It's great, it's a gift, so it's a gift.
Where's that money come?
It's there, whatever it's, it's whatever's left to, from the town, would be gifted to the town for.
There. Oh. Okay.
There's a full-blown report from the First Meeting House feasibility group coming out. Their meeting is Wednesday morning, so if I can put the final revisions on that, probably Monday.
Yeah.
Alright, wonder if we have a public meeting on it?
Okay.
On the twenty seventh.
So what is this article? It's just to purchase it?
To, to, to recommend that the town take possession as a gift, but church across the street.
Yeah.
I know, we have discussed this, um, what's the discussion, I don't know, um, what would be the ultimate cost of that building?
Please.
Their cost right now is sixteen thousand dollars, but that's bare, bare, bare bones. I think it would cost us a little bit more to their, like, obviously it's hard or impossible to tell what we're getting when we open that up. We did get a full-blown inspection done of the building and the inspection pretty much said, hey, it's a historical building. It has its issues, but the historical and sentimental value may outweigh the issues. So it is going to be a town investment, but I personally and professionally feel that it is the town's moral duty
Yeah.
to accept something like this because if you do not take a piece of historic
It's bringing it back.
value of, of property of such historic value, what are you going to do later? You'll, you'll, the town's vote will be the first to complain when it looks like garbage and it's been boarded up and the town has such a convoluted ownership with it, whereas the town owns the steeple and the land up to it and the cemetery behind it.
Yeah, so we already take care of quite a bit of.
And the, the town has already invested a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in the last two decades into different projects in this building.
Right.
And I do think it's going to be an investment, but if there was anything that we were doing that's going to qualify for grant funding, this is it.
Yeah, so there's more positive than negative to own the building, then it'll, it'll open up.
Right. Yeah, if, if we, if we don't, yeah, like you said, if we don't take ownership of it, we're going to eventually own it in worse condition.
Right.
We'll have to, yeah.
Right, right.
And you have to do, spend a ton more money taking, doing something that's.
Understood.
And there's grants and there's all kinds of
Yeah. Yeah.
I was expecting everyone.
Good things that have happened.
This has the support of both the Historical Commission and the Historical Society. The historical, which one is not the town board?
Com- uh, the society.
Society, yeah.
The Historical Society has volunteered and we would have to figure out at a select board level what this would mean to be
Costodian.
custodian of it with not, I wouldn't go that far, I don't wanna put things in Mr. Green's mouth and
Yeah.
Yeah.
But as, uh, we have a letter where they say they will do their part and I do personally think that at a select board level, we are going to need to build
Yeah. They'll oversee.
into some sort of group to oversee this, even if it's just a committee or a trustee. We'll have to look, I don't wanna do too much work ahead of the actual acceptance of the building.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Alright.
Any questions?
Mmm, no, I don't think so.
Make motion that we accept the article.
I'm gonna answer, can you?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
The acceptance of an alteration of the layout portion of Williamsville Road as presented.
It's a good idea.
Long story short, this is a five million dollar state grant the town received. It's paying for the bridge work and the engineering. There are two parcels that need to be taken by eminent domain, which sounds a lot scarier than it is
But.
because it's not serious eminent domain. I believe it's five hundred, five hundred and seven hundred, the values of the eminent domain writings. You'll see later this evening, probably in a couple of minutes, that I do request approximately seven thousand dollars in reserve transfer funds for the legal and deed work that was done to make this article possible.
Okay.
Make motion that we accept the article twenty two.
Okay, second, there's second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The fun part. Fire truck. Get exclusion, make sure it was bold.
Yes.
Yep.
Because there's not as many parameters around what we can and cannot say here.
Yeah, yep. Any questions?
Have we decided on that fire truck that they're proposing?
They did, yep.
Yes, not the one we.
And I do believe then, but, and I believe that the number is going to go down to four ninety nine.
Yeah.
I just, do you know that for fact?
Yeah. Did a contract come in?
Yeah.
It did.
Yep, this was the discussion that was in select board, like, they were like one and the other.
So.
So where?
It's, it's, they're leaving it up to the department head to make a professional judgment to him, that's what.
Yeah, and it is four ninety nine and we signed a very, like, it doesn't have teeth at all
Uh.
that they will hold this for us should we get the money and the vote and like, so there, it will be the four ninety nine number that I would change
Yeah.
in the final versions of the document.
Understood. Motion to recommend.
But is it, and the selectmen approved that it?
Oh, sorry.
Uh-huh, yep.
Yes, 'cause the.
The original one was a hundred thousand.
A million.
A million, oh, sorry, just a number, uh, zero, um.
Yeah. Yeah. And we will need to do a floor amendment to this to bring it down to the price of which Chief Hayes has a invoice in hand.
That's.
Yeah.
Which is four ninety nine, let's call it ninety nine ninety nine.
So we're not replacing what we have?
We're going to a smaller version.
We're going to a smaller version.
Which, again, leave it to the professional department head that's running the department to make that decision, that judgment.
Why would you do a floor amendment? Because if that blows up in your face and they don't have it, leave it at the six hundred line of roll.
I asked Bob about that too.
I say leave it at the six hundred line of roll.
We can, we can have that conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the only argument would be you'd have to go back at a later meeting to rescind the author, borrowing authorization.
If it, that one sells, you can't buy it.
To the board. I know, I agree, I agree, I agree.
It's easier to rescind than it is to leave it.
Exactly, yeah, ask for a law, yes, yes, I agree, yep, okay.
We'll work with the chief.
Uh, yeah, just say it.
Alright. Alright.
Anyway.
Motion to recommend.
No, second.
Second. Not really, but yes.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Aye, okay.
Rosemary, you do not need to vote for recommendation and should you not vote for recommendation, it will be outlined on the motion document.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd just be three and a one, or right now they're actually only four, four zero right now.
I really think it should be another option, but, yeah, that's my personal.
You, you also can abstain, that's the, that's the other option.
You're not entitled to, you know.
No, I'm not gonna abstain, you're, you're voting, you don't.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, okay, alright, uh, twenty four is the borrowing authorization for.
The two hundred thousand dollar pickup plow, plow truck.
Plow truck, this is the used Oshkosh, right?
Department of Labor.
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Okay, twenty five is two fifty for the brush bar.
Two twenty.
Two twenty, two twenty for the brush bar. Are they trading in the old one?
So I actually had this conversation with him today. They are going to use it until such time, they have to start putting money into it and then off.
It's just. Yeah, that's fine, fine. Yeah, that's fine, fine.
So he'll run to for hopefully a couple of years.
Yeah, sure.
Good, make motion, make certain.
Alright.
Sideboard.
All in favor? Okay.
And this part, you guys don't need to do?
No, we don't, we don't, we don't, as well.
I was looking at that sidebar, that was way up. I was hoping it wasn't that long of a document.
Yes.
The sidebar, you see it's still on the top.
Oh, okay.
I was like, what is a hundred articles or what?
planning more. No, it's taking up space.
Yes.
Yeah.
If you're really itching to know more about those, they are going to be presenting to the public on Monday, May nineteenth at the select board meeting, on the planning board articles.
Something on May nineteenth.
Alright, so that takes care of the end of town meetings. Uh, this document here should be in your packet.
I did not have that without.
No, I got.
I put a, a couple of them right here.
Here, here.
You have a more.
Is there one down by mine?
You don't have one. I, did you take a hundred, did you take the whole packet?
What?
I had a whole.
I took the one from over there.
Is this what you're talking about, but I don't think these have anything either.
That's where they're going.
Yes, this is what I'm talking about.
Yes, there's not that much. Something, yeah.
There you go, Hunter. Here you go, Amit.
Tubbed acquired.
Yeah, I have it. You have that?
Yeah.
Alright, I am making a reserve fund transfer to you guys this evening for a variety of reasons, but we have packaged it up. If I find the paper that said these to sign, okay, packaged it up as one. We will likely need to come back in two or three weeks for year-end transfers, but I am working with our new accountant, Samantha Shatterton on that. She started this past Friday and is already beginning to note a few good things. We're meeting again this Friday to discuss year-end closing and I will have a report on that for you at your next meeting. The first is a police department transfer. The police department is requesting eighteen thousand five hundred and thirty seven dollars and seventy three cents. This is a portion of almost forty seven thousand dollars in shortages based on turnover and some personnel issues from injuries, et cetera. Any questions on that?
Yes, so it, uh, we are increasing the police wages, sorry, can you explain a little bit? I did not get this part.
What are we doing? Somebody, one of our officers left, one of our officers was injured. We had to bring in part-time people to fill those positions, but they also get paid for their buyouts, for their time.
Yeah.
That created a shortfall in the budget and now we need to fill that. Chief Kucher was able to find approximately twenty six thousand dollars within his own budget line to take some of it off
His budget, right.
and then came to me for twenty three. Is the eighteen five thirty seven fit in here with the rest of these requests? And there will likely be a small year-end transfer at your next meeting to finish getting it to where it needs to be. But this is the, the lion's share of the monies from the, that the finance committee is involved in.
That's what I'm saying.
It's kind of the cost of doing business, unfortunately, like, people move on, things happen.
Yeah, I know.
It's a lot of turnover, right, at least.
Things are always in flux.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're completely in the circle.
So. B, Williamsville Road, legal and appraisal services, seven thousand five hundred and forty six dollars. This came out of select board services. Without this, we will not be able to pay the legal bills for the rest of the year, so. C, historic building condition assessment, First Parish Meeting House, total seven hundred and twenty five dollars. I covered this from my TA employee support line because I felt it was so important to actually have done for the taxpayers. That's it. Accounting services. Due to a personal matter that I don't, that I can't get into, we have a need to pay our new accountant for the remainder of the year. It grand totals approximately three thousand one hundred and ninety one dollars.
Any further questions?
Twenty hours, man.
Yeah. Motion to approve the reserve fund transfer as submitted, any about thirty thousand dollars total. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm never printing like this again.
Paper clips.
There you go. When you're the guy telling people you don't wanna use paper, you don't have paper clips in there.
You should just keep your printer, do you want a notebook? I'll, I don't wanna keep this.
Okay, any other business needs to be brought up or by this committee?
Um, the only thing is, is I spoke to the school committee on their way out about their YouTube, um, news.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, um, because I, I wanted to see that meeting that you had with the other towns, or, or the, the one that was
Yeah. The budget subcommittee meeting they had last, yeah, yeah.
The third meeting they had, yeah, and it didn't appear.
Okay.
Um, and I couldn't find it today, so I asked them to forget the Zoom and just
Stream live to YouTube.
stream, yeah, do, do the meetings for the public because we can't, if we, there's no communication, then we can't, how can we okay a budget? We just, they need to hear that, they need to be more, um, visual. Um, and, and that goes along with the school committee. Without, without zooming in, having your face on there, um, you don't create a crowd of people or voters. You create a few, you know, maybe if you have to be there. So I found it intimidating, um, when I, when I read that that's the only way you can see the subcommittee meeting. And then, um, also the school committee meetings used to be live and now they're not. Or I'm not educated enough to find that on YouTube was basically where, where it's at. So, um, I asked them to do that then, um, to, what, you're supposed to hear about the rental fees that we get Hubbard's.
Yes, Chief.
Um, I'd like it on all the schools, what we get for rental fees.
Hey, do you have, know, you watch meetings more than anyone I know, actually. Do you, does the school have their meetings? Do you, does the school have their meetings up on YouTube to your knowledge?
They have a YouTube channel, they have their own channel. You can go and find them. If you want, I'll show you a link.
I think it should be posted for the town.
It's, well, it's posted, um, they're, they're, they have a YouTube, their own channel
People. Oh, she didn't say that.
and if you follow their channel, just like you do the town of Hubbard's, then it has its own channel. So you can watch all the, and you can
Right, I had that, I had the subcommittee meeting, but they didn't put it up.
Yeah. It might not be posted yet, if they did it, the regular YouTube, it gets posted. Um, if they do those subcommittees, some of the subcommittee, it's not posted, they
It takes them a month to put it up, men, meaning, which is kind of
It might, if, I've, I've seen it lag, usually they're pretty on time with it, um, posting their
Well, we pay them to do these, have this intelligence there, I'm gonna call it intelligence, um
Well, transparency, word you're looking for is transparency.
Thank you. But I mean, I'm just saying that, that, um, if, if we can't get the news out, it's a concern.
I'll give it the good old college try tomorrow on their YouTube page to see what I can put together. And if there's not, say, a majority of their last few meetings up, I'll mention.
Okay, alright, good, cause I'd like to.
Yeah.
Cause they're usually pretty
But, yeah, I've never had any complaints about the meetings not being up. They also do a lot of the, the sporting events and the
The school committee
Yeah, the ones I can't find are the, like, subcommittees, 'cause they, I don't think they're
Yeah.
And, and they're usually at odd times too, yeah.
Yes, yeah, 'cause that's like a
Well, even if you have to go back and
Right.
My video was four days ago.
If I listen
Yep. What is it?
Uh, Tracy said
Uh, school committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, from what?
She should've.
She, yeah, she just, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Does it say what?
Well, it says
Yep. April tenth, yeah, and then March fourteenth, there's March sixth, do you know the date that it was, Rosemary?
But that's
Tenth. Yes.
Yeah. What?
Do you know the date that it was?
Thursday, so they're, they're not
I know, but what month are you looking for?
Oh, I was looking for the Thursday meeting.
This past one, yeah, it's not up yet, the last one, that's April tenth.
The past
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Do we have a summary of what happened at that meeting?
That's where they voted to reduce the assessment for all of us.
Yeah, that's the summary.
That was
But the three towns were there on
I don't know, I don't know if the other towns participated. Uh, I had a conversation with a school committee member from another town about, you know, pushing for that
Right.
because that's what saved us at Rullin, was what you did, the same thing, they reduced our assessments and I asked because Barry, okay, I'm gonna have to override this year and this may help them not have to do an override, so that might be, you know, helpful for them, so.
Okay. So what if they go for an override anyway and they
If, if they go for an override, then they're failing basically, they already failed, they are failing the school budgets in those towns. So the problem is, of course, it takes three towns to fail the school budget, so they're gonna be on the hook to pay the school budget when the override passes or not.
Oh, okay, alright, so whether they pass it or not, they're in big trouble.
Yeah. They could be in big trouble.
And just so you know, for the FY twenty-seven budget, which starts very soon, actually, I started drafting it up today. Uh, it, it is my intention next year to, even though it's going to be more work for me, split up the meetings again into finance committee centric meetings and select board centric meetings. I just feel like it was a, it was a bit much doing them all together and there were times where things got lost.
Yeah.
And maybe if we had one smaller conversation with each entity, we would get more things kind of smoothed out in less time versus putting on the circus show and really getting nothing out of it.
Yeah.
So that is my intent next year to have a meeting scheduled for you guys well in advance with dates and times of individualized meetings to have conversations so that when we get to the end of it next year, everyone is sure and firm on what they're voting for, what it means and have had the opportunity to discuss it because transparency is one of my number one initiatives as the town administrator here and I wouldn't want to have anyone tell me that they didn't have the information presented.
I did mention to the girl that, and sorry about being late, 'cause I, there was no sign, I thought it was the regular time.
Oh, fine.
Wasn't it six thirty? I'm sorry, what?
Was that six?
Five.
It was at six.
Oh, it's at six, so I wasn't too late.
I learned that, I didn't know.
You were, you were fine.
Oh.
Okay, okay, um
My wife's not here and I'm taking
But, you know, the state is at a stalemate, that's why we're not getting the answers.
Mm, correct.
And that'll last till
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause the first part, 'cause that act, I wanted to understand that act as well, so I'll have to go back and read, um, that one.
Um, so we, we have the updated PowerPoint presentation that she presented, she made some corrections on it.
Well, yeah.
Nate has it, I have it, so we can put it on the website.
Well, she said it all
Well, I'm gonna send, I'm gonna send it out to everybody.
Perfect, yeah, that way you can go through it and you can really get a good understanding of it, so.
Yeah. Yeah, cool, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, can I motion to adjourn?
Thank you, motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All fair.
Aye.
Page fifty-six.
I don't, you can make the